Good evening, everybody, and welcome to a online work session of the Independent School District 279 School Board. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D dot 21, in the current state of emergency during the COVID pandemic, this work session of ISD 279 School Board will be conducted via electronic means with current state and federal pandemic guidance. Superintendent Corey McIntyre and Board Chair Mike O'Stafi have determined that due to the health pandemic and emergency declaration, a meeting format allowing for open in-person attendance is not practical or prudent for this work session. Members of the public may monitor the meeting electronically via online streaming. Tonight, there are several topics. The first is the Monitoring Report A: Curriculum Program Improvement Process for Science, ELA, Social-Emotional Learning. We have a Monitoring Report A through F for the 279 Ready to Restart. We have the Osseo Area Schools Learning Model Update, and we have the COVID-19 General Notification Process. The outcome of tonight's meeting is that board members will receive information on the improvement process for curriculum, the Ready to Restart, the Learning Model Update, and the COVID-19 General Notification Process. With that, I call this meeting to order. And welcome again, everybody, and I will hand off to Superintendent Corey McIntyre, Corey, for check-in.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to all the board members and to the many district and building administrators participating in our meeting this evening. I'll be brief, so we can get right into the agenda this evening, but as Chair O'Stafi mentioned in our outcomes for tonight, board members, you're going to get information regarding our efforts to continue to move forward in our curriculum improvement efforts in Science, ELA, literacy, and social-emotional learning, even though we're in the pandemic and moving through different learning models. We're also going to give you an update on our Ready to Restart learning models, including hearing from some of our building principals and how the experience of the start of our K-12 hybrid has been since last Monday. We'll also have a presentation on our COVID-19 General Notification Process. You're going to understand more deeply the purpose and process we're going through by our COVID-19 Response Team, and you'll also get an update on our case data within the school district. So with that in mind, Chair O'Stafi, if you're okay with that, I think we can just move right into our first agenda item and the presentation with Jeremy Willie, Director of Learning Achievement, and other members of the Learning and Achievement team.
Very good.
So thank you, Jeremy.
Good evening, Superintendent McIntyre, School Board members, Cabinet members, and members of the viewing audience. My name is Jeremy Willie, and I'm the Director of the Department of Learning and Achievement. And with me this evening are Robin Gonzalez, Assistant Director, Barb Erickson, Interim Elementary Curriculum Coordinator, and Jill Kind, our Secondary Curriculum Coordinator. Tonight, we are here to provide you with an overview of the program improvement process, which is our curriculum adoption process that we plan to conduct throughout the course of the 2020-2021 school year and beyond. The outcomes for our presentation this evening are that board members will preview three current and/or upcoming curriculum adoption processes, learn about the adoption process cycle we use, and examine logic models that have been developed for each adoption process. In accordance with School Board Policy and Procedure 616, our world's best workforce, the Department of Learning and Achievement, in collaboration with staff across all sites, will implement a periodic program improvement process, or PIP, as we call it, for the review of all instructional programs. The PIP utilizes a systematic process to ensure continual improvement in curriculum, assessment, and instruction. The goal of the PIP is to support high levels of student learning through the development of comprehensive curricular programs. The PIP takes place over a period of several years and incorporates research on trends and best practices, evaluation of current programming, and compliance with federal and Minnesota statutes, and planning for revision. On this slide displayed for you is a cycle infographic, which highlights the steps in the process that we work through, beginning with defining the process and concluding with the identification of needed improvements following the implementation of a new curriculum resource. Each of the steps in this cycle are highlighted in the logic models for each curriculum area that we will share with you this evening. Here you will see an example of a timeline that has been developed for the potential adoption of a social-emotional learning curriculum resource for students in pre-K through 12th grade. Each step in the process is highlighted horizontally from left to right with a brief description of the overarching activities that will occur at that point in time. On the larger, more comprehensive logic model outline, separate and more detailed timelines for each of these six steps are highlighted with specific outcomes for each meeting that occurs over time. At this point, Robin Gonzalez will share information with you regarding our work with science this year. Robin, you're muted if you're speaking.
Robin, you're still muted.
That, am I there now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Sorry about that. I apologize. On the slide that you see in front of you is the logic model that guides our work as we move through the program improvement process for science in both secondary and elementary. The problem statement at the top articulates our reason for engaging in this process with science. In 2018, the Minnesota Department of Education began a review process of the Minnesota Science Standards. The final draft of the new science standards was presented to the Commissioner of Education in May of 2019. We are following the implementation timeline provided by the Minnesota Department of Education as we move through the program improvement process. The requirement is for full implementation of the new standards by the year 2023-24. The MCA IVs that will be aligned to the new standards will be administered in the spring of 2024. On the bottom of this slide, you will see the goal statement for our program improvement process in science. The new science standards look significantly different from the standards that were released in 2009. There is a shift from telling students what they will see in science to students asking questions, developing predictions, discovering various possible answers, and explaining their findings. This shift aligns with what we know to be best practice in instruction and matches our current instructional practices in both math and literacy. Another way in which the standards have changed is that they are built around three strands called dimensions in the standards. The first dimension, Science and Engineering Practices, refers to the important practices used in the fields of science and engineering. For example, a few of the practices that students will engage in are asking questions and defining problems, developing and using models, developing explanations and designing solutions, and obtaining, evaluating, and communicating information. Cross-cutting Concepts is the second dimension. In this dimension, students connect knowledge from the various disciplines of science and engineering into a scientific view of the world. An example of this is learning about cause and effect, patterns, stability, and change. And the third dimension, Core Ideas, students will learn about the core ideas in the areas of the physical sciences, life sciences, earth and space sciences. Barb Erickson will speak to what has taken place in elementary as we are in the beginning stages of the program improvement process.
Thank you, Robin. In the summer of 2019, a team of kindergarten through fifth-grade teachers began meeting to review the draft of the new science standards and compared the standards to the FOSS Science Kit resources that we currently use. This was done to understand that if the FOSS resources could be redistributed amongst the grades to match the new standards. They determined this was not the case. To learn and attend to the change in the standards, cross-district collaboration began in November of 2019 when members of the Staff Development and Assessment Specialist Team attended the Minnesota Science Teachers Association Conference. The team then trained at MDE with the all-district science leadership on the shift in the standards and preparing for implementation. The shift I am referring to is physical science no longer being taught in sixth grade. It is now embedded in instruction in the elementary grades. The SDS team began investigating resources and collaborating with other districts who began piloting materials, one of which was Farmington School District, who was piloting ambitious science teaching as an interdisciplinary content designed by teacher-led writing teams from Farmington. This year, for elementary, we will be moving through steps three and four of the timeline that Jeremy shared with you. This means that we will be exploring resources that match the newly adopted standards, designing an evaluation process, and engaging in financial planning to support a potential science pilot in the 2021-22 school year. This year and throughout this process, we will support staff through professional development as they learn about the new standards and the shifts in instruction that will happen over the next few years. And now Jill Kind will talk to you about secondary science.
Thanks, Barb. In February 2019, we formed a secondary program improvement team with 14 teachers representing all buildings and grades, including special education teachers. The first role of this group was to do a deep dive into the second draft of the standards. This draft allowed us to better understand the fundamental changes from the previous science standards to the new ones. These standards focus on students as meaning makers and emphasize the scientific and engineering practices. One change in the new standards is the shifting down of content. As Robin said, physical science went from sixth grade to elementary. Earth science shifted down from eighth grade to sixth grade, and physical science from the high school to eighth grade. Another change is the credit requirements for high school students. Students will still need to earn credits in biology, in either chemistry or physics, and now they will also need to earn an earth science credit rather than a physical science credit. These early learnings, along with the research the team conducted into the standards, carried us into an analysis of our current reality as well as visioning for the future. In order to best support the transition to the new standards, we formed a collaborative group of districts, including Anoka, Wayzata, and Adina. This group has met several times to share implementation plans, professional development opportunities, and generate solutions to implementation. Program Improvement Team looked at our science student achievement data. The MCA Science Test takes place during eighth grade. Historically, middle school performance on the MCA Science Test has been below state proficiency levels. The Program Improvement Team decided to spend the first part of the implementation focusing on middle school science, and we began last fall with sixth grade. Our sixth-grade science teachers knew they were going to be teaching entirely new content, earth science, as well as standards that require students to be meaning makers. And in October of 2019, we brought them together for targeted professional learning on both content and practices. Additionally, we made the decision to move forward with implementing a new sixth-grade science resource and standards during the 2021 school year. We then began to examine resources that would support the delivery of standards, increase student achievement, and put students in the role of scientists. Additionally, teachers wanted a resource that would help expand their content knowledge, since they were teaching a totally new content area. The sixth-grade science teachers previewed four different resources, using a rubric to evaluate each resource. At the end of this day-long experience, teachers overwhelmingly felt that STEM Scopes was the resource they would like to use. STEM Scopes fully integrates with Schoology for both teachers and students. The text in STEM Scopes is available in both English and Spanish and can be read to students. Teachers have options to do physical labs or simulations in each of the units. This is especially helpful during distance and hybrid learning. It also provides a built-in way for teachers to differentiate instruction for learners. Examples of differentiation include the ability to level readings, provide accelerated experiences, and additional practices for students who need it. In order to monitor the progress of students, we will use the built-in assessment package to create common assessments at the sixth-grade level that include open-ended questions and as well as questions they may see on standardized tests. An additional piece of work that the sixth grade will undertake this year is partnering with the Department of Educational Equity to develop units specific to the sixth-grade standards regarding the Minnesota American Indian Tribes and Communities. Our first step with high school will be having our high school program improvement team do a close reading of the earth science standards. These standards will form the backbone of a new high school science class to meet the credit requirements under the new Minnesota Science Standards. Once we have determined the overall course design for the new course, the program improvement team will revise our current biology, chemistry, and physics courses for full implementation by 2023-24. Now Robin is going to talk about balanced literacy in ELA.
Yes, so we will be moving from science to literacy. On this slide, you will see the logic model for the program improvement process for English Language Arts and Balanced Literacy. And the problem statement and goal will look very similar to the statements and goal that were on the science logic model. We are at the very beginning of the program improvement process for English Language Arts and Balanced Literacy. As currently, we are waiting to hear back from the Commissioner of Education on the approval of the draft of the new standards, which were presented to her this September. After the commissioner approves the new standards, Minnesota Department of Education will provide implementation guidance and guidelines, including the dates that districts must implement and the date that the updated MCAs that will match the new standards will be in place. In the timeline that Jeremy shared with you earlier in this presentation, we are planning to go through the stages of defining the process and assessing the current situation during this school year. In doing this, we will solicit stakeholder membership, identify and collect data, and develop a shared understanding for the Program Improvement Process Task Force. We will also conduct a comprehensive analysis of student achievement data in reading and identify potential areas for improvement, along with examining our existing curriculum resources. To help prepare staff for implementation of new standards and instructional shifts, we will need to provide staff development throughout this whole process. Jeremy will inform you about the work that is being done on social-emotional learning this year.
The third and final content area that we will be sharing with you this evening focuses on social-emotional learning, which I referenced at the onset of this presentation. Here, similarly to what my colleagues have shared for science and literacy, is the logic model that has been developed to engage in the program improvement process for social-emotional learning. At the top, a problem statement is articulated, while at the bottom, you can see the goal of the curriculum adoption process evaluation outline. As you move horizontally across the logic model from left to right, you can see the resources utilized, the activities that will take place, the intended outputs, and the desired outcomes and impacts. The Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, was signed in December 2015 as the nation's new pre-K through 12th grade federal education law. ESSA requires states to develop plans that address standards, assessments, school and district accountability, support for struggling schools, support for educators, and ensuring a well-rounded education for all students that prepares them for college and career. The focus on a well-rounded education means that students should participate in many learning experiences in a wide range of disciplines, including language arts, mathematics, science, social studies, world language, physical education, the arts, and many other fields as a regular part of their school day, week, and year. One way schools can promote a well-rounded education is to explicitly teach social-emotional learning. In addition to this information outlined in Minnesota's ESSA Plan, our District Planning Advisory Council recently made a recommendation to support this work on behalf of students. This recommendation reads as follows. "We recommend that the district implement a consistent, evidence-based, social-emotional learning program, including a scope and sequence for all students, pre-K through 12th grade." Finally, as we consider the results generated from our recent survey administrations to students, families, and staff, the following three key themes emerged to support our work in moving forward with a potential curriculum adoption to support social-emotional learning. First, students need support in learning social-emotional skills and support in processing emotions resulting from current events. The second theme was that families and students need strategies and help with keeping their students engaged in their school and homework. Finally, students need opportunities to build relationships with their teachers and with other students, as well as opportunities to socialize and to learn from each other. In thinking about our current reality in Osseo Area Schools, social-emotional learning has been implemented to varying degrees across the district. Elementary counseling staff are supporting social-emotional learning by teaching lessons from second step. However, the number of lessons a student receives may differ based on grade level and depend heavily on counselor staffing. At the secondary level, some students receive social-emotional learning during their advisory. The learning materials and objectives vary greatly from class to class and from school to school. As you can see here, various evaluation metrics will be utilized to determine the extent to which the activities and outputs are completed with fidelity and a high level of success throughout the adoption process. Some of those metrics include, but are not limited to, MCA, Fast Bridge, NWEA MAP, feedback from students, teachers, and families, our Promising Practices Study, and various forms of discipline data. Lastly, as we think about long-term impact, we expect that if the plan we have developed is accomplished, these activities will lead to the following changes in the future. First, students will experience lower rates of public health concerns. Second, each student across the district will have equitable access to social-emotional learning embedded within their core instruction. And finally, exit interviews of outgoing high school students will be conducted to solicit feedback from them regarding the extent to which students felt as though social-emotional learning needs were met during their experience in Osseo Area Schools. The goal of social-emotional learning is to address the social and emotional needs of all students to ensure their success in school, in career, and in life. Developing students' SEL skills improves their capacity to learn and helps prepare them for college and career. In order to meet rigorous standards, students need to be able to regulate their emotions when they become frustrated, collaborate with their peers, communicate their ideas, and take the perspectives of others. SEL has a positive impact on student achievement. According to a 2011 meta-analysis of 213 studies involving more than 270,000 students, those students who participated in evidence-based social-emotional learning programs showed an 11 percentile point gain in academic achievement compared to students who did not participate in SEL programs. Students who participated in SEL programs also demonstrated the following attributes: increased development of social and emotional skills, improved attitude towards self and toward others, improved positive social behaviors, and decreased conduct problems and emotional distress. Listed on this slide and the following slide is a sample of various research studies that we plan to review in detail as we engage in this work for students. On behalf of the Department of Learning and Achievement, I would like to sincerely thank you for participating in our presentation this evening. With Superintendent McIntyre's permission, we're happy to entertain any questions or any comments that you have at this time.
Chair O'Stafi, I'm happy to turn it over to you to facilitate the question process, since we have a process that's kind of worked for us when we do virtual meetings. So if you ever want to do that, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to try to work off of how we're set up in the board. So with that, Director Bristol, do you have any questions or comments for the team? John, are you muted? All right, let's go to Director Dawson Walton, Director Dawson Walton. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for the presentation. It's really refreshing to hear and kind of even get back to the core, which is our program and curriculum. So I have a lot of thoughts. But one of my questions, and I can kind of move along after this and kind of hear what other people have to say is, you know, with the social-emotional learning, I mean, that's a really big piece that I know many of us have been focused on. And, you know, I think in times like what we're in now, it's probably, it's the most, probably one of the most important aspects of ensuring that our children are even getting to the point of having an excellent academic experience as well. One of my questions, I was curious of how do you, you mentioned counseling, and I know some of the schools have applied to be part of the RAMP, that RAMP program, that really it seems like it does like a really deep dive of connecting with students who have been, for whatever reason, whether marginalized or just, there's a noticeable kind of disconnect, which has proven to really improve the whole experience of not only even the student, but the entire family. So how does that program connect with that social-emotional learning? Or does it at all?
That's a great question. Thank you. I'm just in thinking about RAMP. I know that that's something that our counseling team through Student Services has really been working with over the course of the past year, if not, if not beyond that. And to be truthful, I'm not incredibly familiar with the specific components of that program. But one of the, one of the really important focal points of the SEL adoption process that I'm hoping to co-facilitate with Sarah Lancette in Student Services is to have a really integrated program improvement team that involves a variety of stakeholders from multiple departments as well as multiple sites. So embedding that counselor perspective in terms of ramp programming and some of the different pieces that they've been able to utilize at various sites, it's really important to have that input and that feedback as a part of this process. So I know that that's something that we're thinking about and we want to be really intentional about. Because we're just, we're early on in the process. We're trying to outline exactly what we'd like it to look like, and we're trying to think about it from its very onset all the way through to its conclusion and beyond in terms of how we, how we are going to evaluate the success of a potential adoption. So I think as we look at resources, I think RAMP is something that we will most certainly have a conversation about. But I've just been collecting different ideas from different people about all the cool things that are out there. So we're just really excited to dive into these pieces because we know it's such a strong need for students, for families, and for teachers right now.
Thank you. Yeah, I would really, I've really been able to get to know that program. I've sat on a couple of advisory panels for that, and I really think that they've done some incredible work. Obviously, now we're, you know, we're not able to do as much in the schools. But yeah, I would really encourage it, because it seems like it's just kind of, kind of a perfect storm. They've done some work on that. So I will kind of, Chair O'Stafi, you can keep going. I might have some questions later, but for now, I'm okay.
We'll probably come back around. Director Bristol, are you available?
Yes, I'm sorry. My laptop just froze up when I got a chance to say hello. So I just wanted to thank the group for the great presentation, and I was incredibly interested in, in the process and how you're coming about these things and how we're working, especially in the science area, to get closer to the standards. And it's, it's going to be a really fun thing to watch happen here. I'm grateful for the opportunity to participate today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director Bristol. Director Simons, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have several. I'll just start out with a couple and then allow us to keep going. So looking at the overall process and plan due So looking at the overall process in Plan Do Study Act and the cycle around that, one of my questions is a little bit around kind of how, how do we speed up our processes? Because, you know, when we see that we're not performing to state standards, and I know in this case, standards are changing, so there's some degree of responsiveness when they change. But when we're seeing the, us perform below a standard, then we have a process to respond to that and to study and to implement. I would just like to understand, are we implementing some more agile approaches where maybe we're seeing some key indicators change before it's reflected in the state standards? Because state standards are such a lagging indicator, where we can get ahead of this maybe a little bit more and try new things or to work in an agile type of approach within, it just seems like it's a little bit more of a waterfall, right, approach where it's, I just want to learn more about that. Is, are we doing things, are we, are we working in different ways that maybe this doesn't quite reflect?
I think we are. I think when we think about the program improvement process in our curriculum adoption cycle, the way that it traditionally holds true in other systems and the way that we used to use it in the past was it was very cyclical. And those cycles were really seven-year cycles. Some districts have eight, nine, six. You, you pick the number, but it was this prescribed number of years before you would go back and review a specific content area. And of course, you tried to kind of stagger those out so that it's not overwhelming to students and families and to teachers to try to implement in a classroom setting. So one of the things that we've been really mindful of as we've engaged in the program improvement process just over the course of the past four or five years is we rewrote our process to be more agile and to be more nimble. And one example of that, I remember sitting down with, with Kelly Parpert in the first few months that I was in this position, talking about our student achievement results with respect to elementary math. And we were able to run an entire curriculum adoption process, a process that in the past would take five, six, seven years. We were, we were able to do that in two years. So I think we're trying to do that. If I were to show you the full logic model that we've developed for SEL, we're, we're really trying to accelerate those timelines. I think the, the difficult tightrope that we walk, if you will, is our work and our success in this project, in this, in this process, is contingent on stakeholder involvement and input. And it's, and it's, it's challenging to solicit those stakeholders and get them to want to be a part of the process with so many other competing demands that they have both personally and professionally. So as I think about SEL, just in particular, I'd like to have something adopted tomorrow. And I'm also thinking, well, what's the right time, given our current climate, to start reaching out and soliciting stakeholders so that we can meaningfully engage in the work? So I think we're trying to do more of that and to try to be less reactionary. And back to that math example, we just moved forward before the math standards were even revised and adopted with both our elementary and secondary pieces because the student achievement results what they were. We wanted to do different. So we decided to just get going. So I think that's the direction that we're trying to move. And I think if I were to share some other pieces with you, I think it might be more accurately reflected in the, in the longer, more fleshed-out logic models. That might be helpful, which I can do.
Right, yeah. That'd be great. I completely understand that, you know, in the work I do, same kind of challenge. You know, we'd love to implement and test these great ideas, but I'm just trying to get my work done today. So the more we can free up capacity to, to test and try new things, it'd be amazing. So the second question that I have then is the, when we look at implementation, because right now there's, you know, we continue to have a lot of concerns about different levels of achievement in our district. So when we look at implementing and we're looking to see, looking to understand the success of an implementation with curriculum changes, among other, other programmatic elements, can you talk a little bit how we're ensuring that we're seeing the same success rates in this process and in this cycle across all of our sites in our district?
One of the things that we have done, and I was going to say this as we were talking about, how do we know when we need to make changes or update or support staff? One of the things that we've done in each of our new adoptions is look at what implementation looks like in the classroom and create some kind of implementation walkthrough protocols for building leaders to use as they walk through a classroom. And for example, look at how math is being implemented in both our elementary and secondary levels and how balanced literacy is being implemented. And then we use that implementation information that we receive and create professional development around that, that information. And then also look at, are there things that are missing? What else can we do to supplement those pieces? One of the things that we did in regards to that is after we had implemented balanced literacy several years ago, we looked, we went back and noticed that there's some, some pieces of support that needed to be implemented in order to support those, those students that were struggling. So we chose some things for Title I and for classroom teachers to use in the classroom to help those kids that were maybe, we had to, we had to support them as they were working through some of the gaps that they had and, and their learning.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director Simons. Next, Director Muscata Jones. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, yes. I'm kind of excited about the logic models and the research that has been done in going forward with a social-emotional learning process. So thank you so much for that. I am wondering, as I often do, when we're piloting and examining this, I heard Jeremy say very clearly, we want stakeholder, stakeholder input for sure. I'm wondering how we can help make sure that we get support and input from people that are reflective of our community. And I'm particularly thinking about, there's health, mental health experts that directly work with certain populations and talking about racial trauma and, and trauma with immigrant and refugee families, those kinds of things. And I, I feel like it would be, it would be helpful to us if they were part, or if we could get some of our community members that are part of that to help in looking at the social-emotional learning curriculum. I'm concerned about, in reading research on it, that sometimes social-emotional efforts end up be, being just another way to discipline that causes more disparities once again. So I'm sure that you're all aware of all of that, but I just kind of wanted to hear a little more on what your thoughts are for including stakeholders, including teachers of color and students, especially in middle school, high school, and community members.
Well, I can share that just as we started talking about potential membership, stakeholder membership. Those are the things that we're talking about. We're talking about having a, a large number of teachers represented from all three levels. We're talking about ensuring that pre-K is represented, that counseling, that social work is represented. We're hoping to have district, we're hoping to have site-level administrators involved in the process. Another piece that we use in, in, in that was an important feedback loop that, that was very valuable to us as we were piloting our Bridges curriculum resource was our District Planning Advisory Council. DPACK was very, very instrumental in supporting our work around a potential curriculum adoption in elementary math. So we had lots of conversations around the things that we were looking at, around the data, the student achievement data, and some of our hopes and dreams around where we wanted to go. So that's another feedback loop that we've been considering. I don't know if Sarah and I have, have talked really, Jackie specifically, about people in the mental health community, experts, if you will, in that community, but I'm certainly open to that idea, and I, and I appreciate you sharing that with us.
Thank you. And just let me know what I can do to help with that, just because I have weird contacts. Not weird, but a variety of contacts that span a lot of areas. One of the things related to what Director Simons was saying, do we ever intentionally pilot any of our programs in areas where we're finding, in sites where we're finding that there are, I don't like to use the word lower academic achievements, but who have lower scores on MCAs and other methods that people use to determine success for students. And then also with that, have we considered, when we do pilots of some of this, particularly maybe at the elementary level, because I think we can get good student feedback from upper elementary through high school, but to involve some sort of parent like collaborative group to look at it and get feedback from parents while they're, while we're piloting this?
So in the last pilots we've done, we have included staff from each of our sites. For example, I'll just use the Bridges Math Pilot that we did. We ensured that there were staff from every single site in our district and that there were representatives from various, every grade level, but various grade levels within each building also. So we really tried to make sure that we had that kind of representative, representation. And we had a lot of conversations between pilot members on how it was going in each of their sites and problem solving and tried to figure out how, how it worked in each of the sites. So we spent, spent a lot of time ensuring that it was successful in each of the sites. And the question about parents, we did not bring in a parent group other than the DPACK. But we did send parent surveys home and then also collected data at conference time from parents.
Thank you.
With that said, Jackie, too, there, there are other, other programming efforts that occur at, at targeted sites. For example, work that, you know, Michael has done with Abbott at Osseo Senior High, and I believe that that's occurred at Northview Middle School and at Edinburgh as well, or a restorative practices pilot at Crestview. There, there are those targeted approaches to, to looking at some different services and our resources and our programming that can be offered at targeted sites. But when we think about some of these larger-scale adoptions, we want to be as inclusive of all perspectives across our system as.
A hundred percent.
And we did the same with our secondary math pilot as well in terms of ensuring that we had every single site and grade level represented at the secondary level. So just, just another point of information.
Oh, for sure. Thank you. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Director Muscata Jones. And Director Douglas?
Thank you. So I have a few questions. My first question is about our science programming and the shift that's going to happen. And I wanted to know about what the plan is for the students who are currently in the middle of that. So are we going to have kids in eighth grade doing earth science and kids in sixth grade doing earth science? Or will everybody shift at once? And I guess what happens to those kids that are kind of like mid-process? I'd like to know about that. And then, well, we'll start with that and then I'll ask some other questions.
So that is a great question. Currently, we have our sixth graders and our eighth graders learning earth science. And so our sixth grade group will be the first group that will have physical science as eighth graders. So we'll teach earth science for two more years at the eighth grade level, and then that will be phased out. And we'll, we'll replace it with physical science when this year, sixth graders are in eighth grade.
So we talked about sixth grade and eighth grade, but what about the other grades? Are they affected by this change?
Seventh grade remains life sciences. And then the other big change is at the high school level with that earth science credit that we have to work with our high school teachers on to determine where to best place that course in the sequence.
Sure. So that part has not been determined yet?
That's correct. That is work that we would have undertaken last spring, and then this little pandemic thing happened.
Little. Okay, thank you. I appreciate you clarifying that. I know that's a question that parents will have. And when it comes to social-emotional learning, I am a member of DPACK as well. And I have really appreciated all the work that we've done on DPACK to bring this to the board and for the board to accept and approve the initiatives that we have going forward. And so I just wanted to say thank you to Robin and Jeremy for the really in-depth information that you've shared tonight about the program and especially highlighting the return on investment in this. Because I think that sometimes people don't understand how critical it is to a student's learning to invest in the social and emotional learning. But I strongly feel that this is one of the most, the highest area of investment that we need to focus on, especially right now. Which brings me to my question in how are we able to adapt our social-emotional learning in a pandemic setting? Especially knowing that so many of our students are really struggling with their mental health right now. Is there anything that we need to do in our plan to shift gears so that we can focus on both distance learning and when we're in person? Or, or any other pieces of information that you can share with us about how we're addressing those needs? Especially, a concern I had is the mention of some discrepancies possibly between different sites, schools, and classrooms at the secondary level. If you could just touch on that, that'd be great.
Well, I think, and thank you for your work on DPACK. I know that that group around that recommendation for social-emotional learning was so into it and so passionate. I'm just super appreciative of the efforts of that large collective group, so I'm glad to see it move forward. As I think about this year, I think, you know what, I think the hard part is you start thinking about a potential adoption process and you get excited. And I'm like, and like I said earlier, I just want to have it now, and I want to put it in place now because I want kids to have it. And I think the struggle with that is, as we go through this process, the, the current or past reality is what continues in the absence of an adopted resource. So for right now, I think if I'm being truthful and if I'm being fair to all of the educators across our system, I think that they're doing anything and everything they possibly can to build relationships, to connect with families, to try to build some sense of classroom community, even in a hybrid, I mean, especially a distance environment. But in a hybrid environment, I know that they're working diligently to try to do that. And I think, you know, different sites are trying to pull whatever resources they possibly can find to try to help. We've spoken before about some of the different social-emotional learning resources we have in our teacher toolkit or on our, our family, our parent family site that we've created and our student backpack. And we're getting good feedback on that, and we want to do more. And I know you're with me on wanting to do more, Heather, so that's where we're, we're trying to go. It's, and back to Tanya's point, it's, it's almost like we, we can't move quickly enough. The need is there. We've identified the need. There's a collective, there's collective support around that need. So how do we start moving this in a positive direction to continue to build that momentum and excitement? So I understand your question, but that's probably the best answer I can give you, which I know it's not as good as you're looking for.
That's okay. I just appreciate you answering it. And I, I, you and I both know that we are on the same page about, you know, wanting to do this right now. And, and I, I would say that, to me, this feels like one of those areas that as a board, we've expressed that, that we would want to continue to make investments and improvements in. And so if there's something that we could do as a one-time, this is what we can do right now to give us a boost in this area. I, I am speaking for myself, but I feel that other board members would probably appreciate hearing what those ideas might be and how can we possibly help facilitate moving those things forward efficiently and effectively. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Douglas. Help everyone understand what the differences are in broad terms between physical science and earth science for those of us who haven't taken it in a while.
Great question. So earth science would deal with the sun, the solar system, our planet, plate tectonics. Physical sciences are going to deal with some basic physics principles. and a little bit of chemistry in there as well.
Okay. Thank you. Second question. I remember going back to the math change. This takes a lot of effort and a lot of resources. I'm guessing millions of dollars per each of these three curricular areas that have been mandated by the state. So what is the state going to do to help us pay for this change that they have mandated in, in the order of millions of dollars? For training, training time, for books, other materials, et cetera.
I'd love to be able to deflect this question to Ron since I know he's sitting in this Google meeting as well. But truthfully, there's, there's not a lot that comes with any change that is mandated by MDE. Local districts, local education agencies are expected to figure out a way to make it happen. And that's just the cold reality of, of any time we're, we're looking at a standards revision that we are required to implement by a certain point in time.
And, and I'll just chime in, Cheryl Stoffey, that we do, we typically will have an understanding through our capital budgeting process for any curriculum adoptions. And we work, business office works very closely with our DLTL team to have an understanding and of what's coming, not just in the current year, but also in future years as well. So we can be planning for that around some of our other capital expenditures. I will also say, one of the things that we're just entering into again as a district, it's time to start thinking about our legislative priorities and our platform again. And so certainly that might be something that the board decides that we want to include on our legislative platform so we can bring more awareness to our legislators. And in some of those pieces, I think that's specific to Osseo. There's probably other districts as well. But certainly as those new standards come down, making sure again that they're not putting new mandates and standards down without actually giving us the resources to be able to do them.
Yeah, I, I think that that's already a part of it, but it certainly has to be reinforced with the legislature. And, and real quick, if we're going to be adding SEL as something we're going to specifically teach, I mean, our high schools already have some of the lowest teacher-student contact times amongst any of our peers. How are we going to add this when in fact we don't have a lot of time as it is? What, what aren't we going to teach?
I think that's, I think that's one of the most challenging questions. And I don't, I don't know that I think that that's even unique to high school. I think if you ask an elementary teacher, they might be thinking and wondering the same exact thing as we think about this. I know that one of the things that we're talking about is trying to figure out or trying to identify a resource that we can utilize to embed within some of, some of the existing content areas that we already have in place, rather than thinking of it as we're going to add another 20 minutes and we're going to add another 30 minutes or we're going to take something away. How do we reconfigure the time that we have? How do we integrate some of those learning experiences within a variety of different content areas at the secondary level? Are there ways in which we can capitalize on our advisory component at the middle school and at the high school level? I think these are all questions that we're really going to have to explore as a program improvement team because you're, you're absolutely right. Our, our, our biggest variable and our, and our number one resource that we continue to compete over is time and time with kids. And so that's something that we definitely talk about with our stakeholders because it's really important for us to understand the teacher perspective. So that's something that we plan to do in all three adoptions.
All right. Thank you.
And Cheryl Stoffey, if I could just jump in for a second, they're having some experience with an SEL adoption before. It's critical that our process really identify and evaluate and study best instructional delivery models and, and who delivers it, which staff provide it, what materials align to that, what content aligns to that model? What program, you know, it's, it's beyond program and materials and content, but also who delivers it and how we embed it into the, the school day? And then also how we align that to those state competencies that we're asked to follow while, and then getting to a point where we can pilot and take data on that and really evaluate whether that model made a difference and get some data back before we go with a district-wide, you know, adoption, right? So our process really needs to unpack those things and ensure the fidelity that we get to that, that end part of the process. And like Jeremy said earlier, it's challenging with the environment we're in. And we're going to do our best to keep that process moving forward, knowing that our models change.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go back up to the top and work our way back down. Director Bristol, any questions after you've listened to some of this?
No, I, I, I just continue to be further educated and I'm, I guess I'm, I'm just excited for these kids as they, they're going to get a chance to, to adopt this new curriculum and hopefully achieve closer to the guidelines, especially in the areas that, that we're falling a little behind on. And I think that it's really, really great that everybody's trying to be proactive and stay ahead of the new ones. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Director Dawson Walton?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So what I'm not quite understanding is how are we? I mean, when we received, it was a blow, I think, to our district to see the MCA results. And I know there were a point in time and, but I'm just not quite seeing the connection between, I mean, as a, as a whole, we're not, you know, the, the numbers weren't great. And then obviously, as you kind of dig deeper, we know that our black and brown students it just, it did at a really disproportionate rate, not excelling. And, you know, we always say we want excellence and educational, an excellent educational system for all of our students. So what I'm, what's the disconnect for me is like, these look great. But then how are you, how is it being, how are, how are these programs being nuanced so that, or maybe it is looking through an equity lens, I don't know. But what's, I guess, what's the connections here? Because I think one of the issues is like, I mean, we hear things and I know we're trying to kind of bring it all together, but you know, it's kind of like, this is all in the midst of a global pandemic, right? And so it's like, we can't pretend that these programs and however they're implemented are going to drastically probably make a huge impact because we're, 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 first of all, we've changed models three times now. You know, I mean, there's not like a, kind of a lack of consistency there. And it's not a diss on our district, but I mean, many districts are facing this. So I, I just want to, I guess what I'm asking is like, it was such a blow to see those numbers. And so how do you reconcile these programs with ensuring that our students who are showing, and pretty much as every, you know, all of our students, we're going to pay, really pay close attention to that. And then the other piece I would say is that it's only as good as how we communicate and engage our parents and our families and whoever, you know, however the families are defined. Because if our families don't know what the changes are, they, it's hard to support. I mean, I would say the same with Bridges. I remember that was rolled out. You know, without like families understanding like this is a huge change, you know, this is, you know, and this is how we're implementing it. This is what you see as the difference. You know, it's not, it's, it's hard to be effective if we don't have that support. And then the last piece I'd say around teachers and our educators are like, you know, and I'm now I'm kind of jumping to social emotional learning. But I mean, how, how do you, how do you put on the teachers that we're supposed to implement this social emotional learning in the midst of this, of course, multiple pandemics? How are we ensuring our teachers have, have some type of support too? Because you're only as good as what you can bring to the table. So it's kind of many comments there. Sorry, my daughter's making brownies, so it's really loud. So I, but I just, I'm really curious of just, those three big pots to me, like, you know, we look at the, the, the MCA results, you look at the communicate, the family involvement, and then you look at, you know, how our, how our educators are and staff are supported and to be able to turn around to implement especially the social emotional learning.
Anybody wondering about that or is that more comments to be looked at as we go through the process?
I can jump in here, Kelsey. Great point. And you, you hit on a lot of variables there that, that challenge us, right? I think through this process at least, really trying to be focused in on what are, how, how can we best teach and deliver instruction? How, how do we ensure we have the best materials and content and improvements there? And how do we make sure we're giving the, the best staff development to our staff while we're doing what you so, you spoke to so well, was involving our families, involving our students and our other stakeholders in that process? So really evaluating all those multiple components of what we know as best practice and making sure that we make adjustments if any of those things aren't beating our targets. Now, like you, you said it well, it's, we were kind of moving on that path pretty strongly last spring. And then, you know, we had to kind of slow down and really deal with a lot of logistical things here, clearly with the pandemic and schools closing. And so we're constantly evaluating, how can we continue to move that forward with whatever model we're, we're in? What is a, is a challenge right now, no doubt. So I know Jeremy and the team have more to add to that, but that, that's when I'm listening to that question, the things that come to my mind through this particular adoption process that we set forth.
I think the only thing that I would add is, is the, is to the last point that you made about teachers. One, one of the things that's always been important to me as a principal and is, it continues to be important to me in this role is my goal is to do anything and everything I possibly can to set people up to be successful when I'm asking them to do something new and different. And that doesn't just mean doing everything we can to get every resource in their hands to be successful. It also means helping them engage in meaningful professional learning prior to that initial delivery of a new resource so that they feel set up to be successful. So that's always the goal and, and we, we work as diligently as we can to try to hit that goal. But with any adoption that we have, whether it's, it's math or science or ELA or whatever we end up doing with SEL, one of the biggest focal points that we will have is how do we professionally develop our educators to be as successful as possible when they engage in this new learning and these new activities with students?
All right. Thank you. Director Simons, do you have any follow-up questions?
Most of my questions were answered through the discussion. I do have a couple of comments. I think the idea of community, community, and we do have community members on our advisory boards, but also the idea of experts that might sit on our advisory committees, I think is really interesting and something that we should consider as we're continuing to go forward and reimagine some of our advisory committees and the role that they play and their makeup. That's something that just struck me as something that we should think about. And then as well as the social emotional curriculum, I think about that as something similar to critical thinking skills, where it's not where we set aside and say this time is for critical thinking now, but it's something that we integrate into the work we do so that it's, it's not something that's separate or takes time away, but it's something that's part of the essential skill set for students to be successful. So those are just my comments. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Director Muscata Jones?
Yes, thank you. So I just want to give a little input as, from a teacher perspective. We talk about social emotional learning. I think Director Simons described it fairly correctly by saying that it's like in the presentation with the science, the core, you know, the course thought processes. And so what I do know is obviously the research is clear, abundantly clear that our return on investment in social emotional learning is comparable to pretty much nothing else. And if we start young and start as young as possible and it's culturally appropriate, then we will be spending less time as teachers redirecting behavior or having conflicts with students because we will have better skills. And I can tell you, even as a teacher in working with these skills, I've increased my particular social emotional learning skills because we can always hone those, right? And so it may seem overwhelming at first, I think, to teachers. But eventually, and I think this is where our staff, we're talking about setting teachers up and being able to, you know, use our instructional coaches and use their SDASs to talk about ways to integrate things so that we're not double duty-ing and down on, on things. And so that it becomes some natural language that we use with each other in, in this very important skill that, I mean, there's been research for a long time that social emotional competence is greater than cognitive competence in workplace success. So it seems to me education should be doing this and should have been doing it more. Sorry, I'm in a little bit of trauma brain from teaching by Zoom, more intentional. That's the word I was looking for. Thank you. So anyway, I just want to say thank you for all the, for this discussion. It's very exciting for my geeky brain to look at all the research and how we're going to go about doing this and especially the critical thinking skills through the science.
Director Muscata Jones, if I could jump in, because this is my background, my passion area too. So no, we haven't really said it explicitly tonight, but know that we'll look at it through a multi-tiered system of support lens too. So what is it every student might get? What is it that, you know, students who need additional support might receive? And then students who really need intensive supports as well? So looking at how we design from the SEL standpoint, how we design our implementation with that in mind, to really make sure it reaches every, every student's need that they present.
And I just want, I'm sorry, I just want to say one more thing. I just want to be very clear that I'm hoping that we can include as many diverse perspectives as possible when we're evaluating any of this because we can't be leaving groups of students behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Douglas?
Yes, thank you. I just, while we're sitting here, I was reminded that when I first became a board member, I feel like around that time, Jeremy and I had a conversation about the science standards and our concerns about how, how well our students were performing and that the state had said that they were going to issue new recommendations, but that process took a really long time. Can you just share a bit about that and how that impacted our decision-making process? And, and why we didn't, or why, why, I say we, because I feel like it was me too, but why the administration did not bring forward a recommendation for changes to the science curriculum years ago when we realized that there might be some issues that we need to address?
We had, as you said, Heather, we had been waiting for the Department of Ed to update and review their standards. And one of the things that has happened over the last two years is many things are on the docket and don't quite, the dates change periodically. One of the things before our last math adoption, the one even before that, when we were using math expressions in elementary, we couldn't wait and adopted some materials. And the following year, the math standards changed and we had to purchase many of the materials over again. And that was a huge cost and also a huge training, huge amount of training for our, our staff to go into one set of materials and then go into another. So we had been waiting and looking forward to this. So even though it's, it seems like we haven't been doing anything, we have been looking at the practices that have been being talked about at the state level and talking to teachers about what that looks like in the instruction with the resources they have now. So those, those asking questions and developing procedures for making, creating their own models and using those models to figure out problems we've been doing. And the nice thing is it really aligns well with both our math in both elementary and secondary. So those are the things that students have been engaged in over these last few years in math. And now they'll be able to do that in science also. So it really binds those two together. But you're correct, we were waiting to get the final update on the standards. And I think it's turned out really in a nice way because this will not be new learning. Well, there will be some new learning for teachers, but it won't be as, as drastic as it was when we adopted the new maths. Well, there will be some new learning for teachers, but it won't be as drastic as it was when we adopted the new maths, the new math programming. Now they've experienced some of that. And we're going to continue to do staff development over the next couple of years so that they'll be really prepared for that and able to implement it with confidence and fidelity.
Thank you. I'm glad that you were able to share that with us because I think that it'll help our newer board members who maybe weren't here when that process first began. And then also I just wanted to reiterate how important it is that the social emotional learning, as my colleagues have shared so much about, really embedding it into our daily process. And I, if there is something that we can do differently in the interim, that I believe that we'd really like to hear that. So I just want to say thank you. My colleagues have asked lots of great questions. The media has shared a lot of great information. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a question for Superintendent McIntyre. We've talked about as a board for about the last year, as we've been developing our strategic plan about the need for a board level curriculum committee. And it would sound like with these three major curriculum changes that we need to implement this committee immediately and provide that type of oversight and governance. So as we're looking at this in future board meetings and strategic sessions, I think we need to prioritize making that happen with these significant changes and significant investments that are coming. So that's just my comment on that. If there's any other detailed questions board members have, I'd suggest reach out to the appropriate department chair and can have those further discussions. But I think with that, we've answered the majority of the questions tonight. And we can move on to the next area. So with that, Director McIntyre, Superintendent McIntyre, we have the presentation for the Ready to Restart.
Yeah, thank you. And I've asked Anthony to push up the presentation for us here. So he'll help navigate that for us. And thanks Chair Ostaffy and board members. And tonight, along with many of our school principals, we're going to provide you with an update on our Ready to Restart learning model. We go to the next slide here. Our goal or our objectives tonight is for board members to get, get an update on our K-12 hybrid implementation. Briefly review our learning model, decision-making tools, update you on the newest COVID-19 case rate data and guidance from the Department of Education, Department of Health in Hennepin County, and then talk about next steps. So as we go into the next slide here, as you've been hearing a lot about our key indicators to inform our decisions in our learning models, you know, we started last Monday, September 28th in our K-12 hybrid model and spent lots of time planning and readying ourselves for that. And I want to give our school principals a chance to share with you how that's being experienced in our buildings. And we can't have them all here tonight, but we have a sampling of each of the levels. And really they're going to speak to you about really just what has gone well, what has been challenging, give you some feedback as it relates to our readiness indicators that we've been studying and on our dashboard models the last few weeks. So with that, I'm going to just kind of queue up our principals that have been waiting patiently. And I thank you so much for waiting. First tonight, we'll hear from Margot Clavon, our principal at Rice Lake Elementary. And we'll talk, she'll get a chance to talk about her school's experience so far. Thank you, Margot.
Great. Thank you Superintendent McIntyre. Good evening, Chair Ostaffy, board and listeners. We appreciate being invited to give our perspective tonight. I cannot possibly begin to talk about the hybrid experience without first extending a thank you truly to hundreds of people that helped us get to last Monday. Transportation, nutrition, technology, there was so much work behind the scenes as we were granted extra time to prepare. And so I just give a shout out to literally hundreds of people. When I narrow it down and think of our building, we literally had to touch every single protocol getting ready for our hybrid model, whether it was arrival, dismissal, cafeteria, recess, lunchroom. It, it just needed attention at every, every step. And so working, 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 when last Monday came around, I shared with Superintendent McIntyre, it kind of felt like a checklist. We started the day, the bell rang, and then we waited for arrival. And it, and it was successful. And then we waited for recess and it was successful. And we waited for busing and we just went down the list. And by the end of Monday last week, it was almost giddiness that all of our work paid off, not only in creating a safe day for students, families and staff, but we got school done. We got school done in that model. And, you know, we've only been a week and a half in, but we're, we're already finding our rhythm. Absolutely. We realized there was unintended positive outcomes with the hybrid. So, you know, I'm not going to lie, our apprehension was up there. We, you know, it was a new model. We didn't know what it would look like, but as last Monday ticked down hour by hour, I could just feel the stress leave the building. And some of the unintended positive outcomes is just the amount of instruction that teachers are able to get through in one regular school day. Truly, on our first day, people would come in and it would be like one o'clock and they're, they're like, I got all my lesson plans done. And it's, it's one o'clock. So with that smaller half class size, they are just able to get through curriculum. And we have some grade levels that next week they're already talking about. They're going to try to push out two math lessons in a day because they're able to make that kind of traction with the class size. Yesterday in a meeting, I had a staff member say, I'm able to meet and confer with every single kid in every single topic of the day. It's not just reserved to the literacy block. So again, that amount of engagement we're able to get with these small class sizes, really a positive outcome. The cafeteria is, is just a dream. You know, we're able to do that six foot distancing. Kids are able to have a lunch experience that is not echo chamber. And I know I've spoken with some of you before that we probably have 20 plus students that simply cannot engage in the cafeteria process. It's too stimulating or they have some nuances of their learning that that just is not a place that they can be successful in. And under the hybrid model, those kids are thriving in there. The volume's down, you know, just obviously the number of kids. Recession has been extremely positive. We had to completely revamp that. But that also has been an absolute joy for the staff that monitors recess. And we've had no injuries in the, in the last week and a half. You know, that, that's typically a hotbed out there. It's a lot of walkie, phone calls, and it has literally been zero. And just again, the pacing of the day, parents are telling me, my, my kid's not wiped out. You know, the engaging is so high and yet all the visual noise of less kids that parents are reporting that their, their kids aren't exhausted as we're building up our stamina for the beginning of a school year. So lots of positive unintended, I believe, outcomes. Our biggest area of difficulty is staff managing. Our platform of communicating with kids at home is through CSO. And so it's staff managing the communication with the kids at home. So they teach all day, they're live with kids, and then they go home and they have lots of interaction on the CSO account from the kids that were working at home. So that is our growth area. We're really working collaboratively at how can we manage that better so that teachers aren't needing to spend exorbitant amount of time in the evening as well as putting in a full day? Even though we're only a week and a half in, teachers are telling me I'm finding my rhythm. You know, I was nervous. I wasn't sure what this would look like, but they're finding their rhythm. And for sure, it's because they are being absolutely collaborative with their grade, grade level. Our motto this year at Rice Lake is link arms, lean in and learn big. And that is exactly what our grade levels are doing it. In a pandemic, either professionally or personally, I keep thinking this is not the time to act alone. And this is not the time to be alone. We really need each other personally and professionally with this pandemic. And our teammates at Rice Lake are really leaning in. There's no way you could do the hybrid model if you were acting in isolation. So we did a lot of PD about that at the start and we already are reaping the rewards. And finally, we, health-wise, safety-wise, we just feel very secure with the hybrid model. We are able to arrange our classrooms with six feet social distancing. We are able to manage all our cafeteria needs with six foot spacing. The recess, the arrival, the dismissal, the bus, you cannot put a price tag on that feeling of safety and security. And, and we're hearing that from kids and well, as well as families and as well as staff. So overall, we're finding it to be a very positive experience. Like I said, our growth area is managing that CSO connection so that kids are getting feedback for their at-home distance learning days. So that's a wrap from Rice Lake Roadrunners. And I believe Adrian, Principal Pendleton is going to take it away for Rice Lake or for Zane Wood.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Chair Ostaffy, board members, district leadership, building principals, hello, everyone. And my esteemed colleague has just stowed my thunder, really. I mean, identical, I am telling you about the positive, positive effects that the hybrid model has had on our building. Ditto everything that my colleague said. Those are some of the things that I wanted to highlight. In addition to all the things that my colleague said, I want to talk a little bit about our professional development, which is when we look at the key readiness indicators, DL2. One of the things we are really, really proud of at Zane Wood is the professional development we provided. Our educational support professionals, they really have an opportunity to put, to support the instruction that's happening in the classroom versus, you know, really managing behavior and other kind of technical things. They really have an opportunity to hone in on instruction. And we've provided them professional development around how you facilitate an intervention group, Google meets, CSO. One of the things we're excited about at Zane Wood is last year, prior to COVID, we made a building decision to use CSO as our platform to, to, to interact with families. So we were well versed in how to use CSO. Our teachers and our ESPs really have that down. In addition to the awesome opportunities that LNA offers our ESP and our licensed staff, our staff were offered 34 additional hours of PD for project-based learning, for PBIS and for Thinking Map. So we're really excited about that. The other thing I want to highlight when we think about instructional preparedness, and I'm going to look at the key readiness indicators, DL3. Not only are our teachers really well-prepared to teach the content, our partners, we still have an opportunity to work with our partners, although we are working with them differently. Boston Scientific, they still partner with us. They work with our fifth graders. So we have real scientists teach science to our fifth graders and they do that virtually. We also still have the opportunity to work with Three Rivers Park District. They work in our outside classroom that was donated by Boston Scientific. And they're bringing environmental experiences outdoors. Our scholars are outdoors with our, with our naturalists. So really I agree, hybrid has given us the opportunity to really focus on instruction and differentiate. And it also provides an opportunity to provide different learning models for scholars where traditional ones may not have been successful for, for all, for each of our scholars. And so the only thing that, and I think because I'm living it right now, that I would say has been a challenge of hybrid is finding coverage when staff had to be out. That, and, and although Laurel Anderson has been awesome, her team has really helped us find coverage when we needed that, if we had multiple people out. My only wondering is how we would, how are we going to be able to sustain that staff coverage? As, you know, being in COVID and those situations happen, how are we able to do that? So I will end there. And again, I want to thank everyone for the opportunity. I always, and again, I want to also thank everyone who's really helped us prepare for hybrid. So thank you so much.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Margot and Adrian, for just giving us a sense for how things are happening or going for us just a few days in at the elementary level. So next I'm going to ask two of our middle school principals to share how things are going at the middle level. We'll start with Maple Grove Middle School Principal Patrick Smith. Thanks, Patrick.
You're welcome. Good evening, everybody. I think Kelly Parper said I have 35 minutes to share our report, well, three to five. Well, sorry, three to five minutes. So I'll try to keep on my clock here. Nice job, Adrian and Margot. You must have had an outstanding supervisor last year. So I'm proud to follow you too. You know, things have been going really well, seriously. I think Margot spoke to it that, you know, we did so much. That extra two weeks was critical. It was huge. And when you talk about building preparedness and getting ready for welcoming students in person, we would have done it without that two weeks, but that two weeks was massive. And it really showed when we got started. So I can't thank everybody enough for that. You know, a couple of shout outs, our building engineers, our, our cooks, just in the service, you know, service preparedness and our building readiness, what they did to get us ready for the lunchroom, for giving, you know, we're handing out meals every day for our students who are going on distance learning and that is going really well. And, but you know, they needed time to get ready for that. And, and so I'd say that's going really well. You know, kudos to the kids wearing those masks. They're doing outstanding. I mean, they really are. I can count on one hand, a couple of students who just, you know, wanted to test the waters. They're middle school kids. So they tested and they found out real quickly what, you know, what the answer to the test was. So they did, they're doing very well with those masks. So I'm very proud of them. Couple, couple of examples in the classroom, you know, as we look at science, science was a good topic tonight, right? As we look at the standards changing and shifting to different grade levels, I was able to visit a couple of classrooms and Mrs. Sevens, one of our eighth grade science teachers, was doing a, a test or an assessment around oxygen levels, so wearing masks indoors versus outdoors. And so how cool is it to see kind of the, the current times and what we're dealing with? And then getting the kids to go through the scientific process with current reality. And, and then also in another science class, they were doing a globe activity where they had a light in between all these globes and they were showing kind of the tilt and axis of the earth and its impact on seasons. And, you know, they're looking at how do they do labs in our current state without sharing all this equipment and going through all this? That was really kind of a struggle on what we were going to do. And teachers are being super creative and coming up with really good ways to engage students on a daily basis when we have them in person, which then they can then take that content in their distance learning days and continue to engage in it and stay engaged so that when they come back, they can get the support. So it's really impressive to see what the teachers are doing with this time and they're doing amazing. And then one last thing I wanted to mention is our parent drop-off and pickup. It's always a fun time of the day. And, you know, we had, I would, I would say a good 400 plus vehicles come in each day, those first couple of days. And we learned some things. We thought we had a good process ready to roll. And we learned that there are some adjustments we could make. And I can't thank, you know, Nick Martini and Deb Schmoyer and Troy Schrifels and, you know, coming out and really looking at our process and brainstorming ways to get more cars off the main street. There's a safety concern. There's a traffic concern. And I can honestly say, since we've made the tweaks, we haven't had one car sitting out on the main street, any of the drop-off or pickup days for any extensive amount of time. So it's little things like that that you might think aren't a big deal. They're a big deal. It's a way we start off our school day and it's a way we end. So we're all in this together and it. So it, we're all in this together, and it, staff from the district level have clearly shown and stepped up and, and supported our schools. I know it's not only my school. And I feel like we've had a very successful start to hybrid because of the collective effort. So with that, one last challenge, and I'll end, is attendance. You know, how are we managing attendance when kids are in person? And then when kids, especially when kids are at home? We have a form that kids are filling out, and then there's work that's being turned in. It is a challenge for teachers to manage different ways of making sure students are engaging and present when they're at home. So we're working through it. I know there's lots of discussions at the district level and at every school level on this. So I want everybody to know that we're not just forgetting about it. It's, there's a lot of discussions being had on how we can make this most beneficial for everybody. But overall, Mustang Nation, we're doing great. We're excited to keep moving forward. So I will move on to Kim Monet. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Good evening, everyone. Well, I just really dittoing what our elementary principals, as well as my partner in middle school. Patrick has said about the hybrid model and how, how we're all navigating hybrid. I have to say that our students have been outstanding, just outstanding. They have been just amazing with wearing their face coverings. They have been amazing in the cafeteria, in the hallways. They are looking at the visual cues that I know that all buildings have in place for our students to really follow the guidelines that we have established for them. Just amazing work on behalf of our students. I've had the opportunity, just like Patrick, and going into our classrooms and asking kids, well, what do you think about the hybrid model? And they're like, you know what, we're really getting used to it. You know, at first, the first day, we were a little nervous about going to the cafeteria, but the way that it's set up, you know, I'm not running down there to try and find a place to sit because there's a space for me to sit. I don't have to run in the hallways to get to my class because there's space for me to walk. And the hallways aren't crowded for me to, to get to my class on time and not worrying about getting to class on time. We have countdown clocks, and when I'm out in the hallway during passing time, there's two minutes left over. Kids are able to get to class on time and feel relaxed and not anxious about being late for class. And so those are some of the things that kids have, have stated. I cannot tell you enough how just all the background support, the, the back support from all of, everyone from the district. And how, just like Patrick was saying, even the little things mean a lot. When we talk about buses and how we navigate our buses and for our kids to walk and getting kids down on the buses and finding their correct buses. Even that process was so much easier with a third of our students in our buildings. Also, LNA and the PD that they provided for our staff members, both licensed and non-licensed, has really, really prepared us for the hybrid model and to navigate all the different situations, to be creative and to manage two platforms and working on those two platforms. And, and really the collaboration that people have had the opportunity to do even cross-curricular collaboration with each other has really been enhanced with this model and the opportunity for that collaboration and planning time for staff members on Fridays. I also have to do a shout-out for all of our support staff. Administrators, SMSs, social workers, counselors, school psychologists, our EL staff, our special ed staff, and SEVCs, how they worked in collaboration with families to make sure that their child was successful in their learning opportunities in the hybrid model and helping them navigate both of those learning situations, both in-school learning as well as distance learning. And really with our ESP staff, really understanding how to integrate, working with students and engaging students through technology has really been amplified in the hybrid model as well. And then our food staff and our custodial staff and how they prepped for our building. And even our food staff preparing hot and cold lunches in the morning. And we're doing a pilot program at Brooklyn for a grab-and-go lunch that kids will, when they walk into the building, they get a choice between hot or cold breakfast, and then they go and have it in a really calm environment in their advisory where they can talk with their classmates, still in social distancing at their desks, and also doing some community building types of activities in the morning, right away when they come to school, and really help them become centered in preparing for their day. And, and then also, you know, a hot lunch during, you know, during their lunchtime, as well as a grab and go as they leave the building for their distance learning day. And so that has also really expressed to our families and our kids that we care about you, whether you're in-building or in-distance learning. And I think that has been really instrumental in creating that partnership with our families, that we are in this together, that we are supporting each other in your child's success so they can do the best that they can in whatever model that we are prepared to offer our, our families. And so I think that has been really amazing. Some of the things that we're still navigating around, Patrick had mentioned it, attendance. We're still navigating around that. Also, you know, really students arriving to school healthy and ready to learn and making sure that our families are remembering to do the, the health screening check at home prior to students coming to school to maintain a healthy learning environment for all the students that are in-building. And, you know, continuously focusing on those students that are still struggling emotionally, socially, academically, and really having them aligned with someone here at school that can provide that support and that ongoing support for them each and every day, whether they're in school or in the distance learning model. And I think, you know, overall, it's gone really, really well. And just incredibly thankful and appreciative to all the supports from Superintendent McIntyre to the assistant superintendents, to all of the directors and each of every one of you school board members as well. So I just really, really want to thank all of you for your support.
Thanks, Patrick. Thank you, Kim, very much for sharing a glimpse of the middle school experience here last few days. And to transition to giving our board a little bit of an update on how things have been going at the high school level. Well, first, we'll have Maple Grove Senior High Principal Bart Becker share how things have been going so far. Thanks, Bart.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And yep, again, Bart Becker reporting in from Crimson Territory. So I would say that overall, it has been highly rewarding to be back in, in-person in the hybrid model. And at the same time, it's also been highly challenging on a number of fronts, highly challenging. On the, on the rewarding aspect, we get to be a, a school community again, which is why every educator I have ever met, that's what has driven them into this profession, to influence in a positive way each and every student who's walks in their own unique path and their own unique journey. And we get to play a role in that in whatever capacity we hold in a school. And so to the strongest extent possible, we're a school again. And we're grateful for each and every day, grateful, grateful for activities which we can engage in, grateful for the learning experiences, for the collaboration. I've been, as has been shared before, so proud of my staff, licensed and non-licensed, custodial to our administrators, student services. It's great to be a school again, and that's what we take with us each and every day. The, the challenges have been many. We, we knew, we knew of the three models, this is the most difficult, and there is not a close second. We're doing things that have not been done before. And starting with our classroom teachers who are preparing their four lessons for concrete learning experiences, two in-person, two in-distance learning. And their magic is working so that students can learn simultaneously in completely different areas while they focus in-person on their kids. And yet, the students they see every other day, there's that, there's that gap in between days of in-person. And so it's, it's, it's just not as smooth of a flow, even though the students in their distance learning engaged in, in their learning. But they're working extremely hard, and they're teaming, and they're creating, and they're innovating, and they're challenging, and the joys of walking the halls and hearing the music from the music wing, seeing the kids in our, in our engineering wing with, with our wood shop and, and our auto shop and to our arts and our, in our cores, the, the kids singing in world languages as they acquire their, their language skills. Just to see the happiness and the joy that goes with learning and engaging students has, has been so enriching, and that's to a credit of our, of our classroom teachers and our instructional ESPs. Our student services have been working extremely hard also to make connections with our students, specifically our incoming ninth graders, usually through, through Google Meet, which again, that's been different. Our counselors are prioritizing the in-person learning opportunities, and so we're not seeing as many kids come down to the counseling office because they're only in school twice a week. So they're doing their very best to connect with them through Google Meet. And it's great, but it's not the same. If, if they are working extremely hard to do so, as are our social workers, our case managers who are building the relationships and delivering the, the accommodations and collaborating with their, with their teachers, our EL teachers as well. It's just been a lot of hard work, rewarding work, and I'm very, very proud of them. We've had our main gym, depending on what time of the day, it is between, it's a teaching space for Fayed. It's also a concert hall for our music because we need to have, until we get the full PPE for the, for the instruments, we have to have them 12 feet apart. And it's also a cafeteria where we have our, our individual tables that spread from the cafeteria into the main gym. And then after school, because of the new decision by the State High School League, we have volleyball practice again. So it's a heavily-used area, and we are very, very fortunate. And yet, at the same time, we're only two weeks in, and we were meeting as principals in our leadership team after school, and we've already had discussions and just conversations with staff that we normally don't have until the long days of April and May and the, just the stress of the year normally wears. We're already having a couple of those conversations. It's, there's, there's just a lot right now. In addition to the daily and the weekly preparation of new instructional experiences, diversified, differentiated, scaffolded, we're at the same time preparing for our safety drills. We got our try-one conferences coming up, and that takes a great deal of preparation to create the, the sections for which families can schedule. We have our ACT test day coming up that we've got to teach our staff for and prepare them. We have to support our try-three students who have yet to earn their, their credits. They, they have no grades right now. Teachers are working hard, learning the new grade book in, in Schoology, and there's just a new structure of how to fully capture the letter grade from Schoology and, and put it into Teacher View so families can, can see it. There's just new learning, and all of that compounds to be more than what we normally feel right now. And on top of that, as was shared by both Kim and, and Patrick, attendance, while we have a process, it is, the frustration is growing amongst teachers, students, and families. It's, it's just not perfect, and we're going to, and as, as we've shared with our, with our staff and our families, the, the conversations are, are continuing. It's specifically with the, the, the distance days that is most difficult to attain accurate attendance and report it accurately. And so there's work to be done there. But all in all, head to toe, it is so good to be back. It's so rewarding to see the kids who you love and to see them, to lock eyes and just to see them travel throughout the day, whether they are an incoming ninth grader or a veteran 12th grader. It's just great to have them back, and I'm very, very proud of our school. Thankful for all the support as well. I echo all the support from our system leadership, LNA. It's, it's just been tremendous. So thank you all, and we'll pass it over from Crimson Territory to Pirate Country with Heather Miller, Inc.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to really share with you. I think I had a, jotted down a couple of things. And one of the things, had three letters, pre, all the pre-work that really went into this really allowed us to do proactive everywhere, proactive. We're being proactive in our approaches and all the things that we've done. We've really been able to build relationships in a way. I, I can't explain it. You really have to be here to see it. Relationships with everyone in the building, anyone that works with our students. You see that relationship building happening all the time. I think obviously a lot of that has to do with smaller groups of students and a larger amount of time that's being spent with our students in the schedule that we're working on. Our students are with our teachers for a longer amount of time, and they really are being able to make strong connections. And I think the other big piece is expectations. No matter who we put new expectations with or asked, people are rising to the occasion, all the staff. It, it doesn't matter who you went and said, okay, we're going to do one-way hallways. The standing conversation here at Park Center is follow the Yellow Brick Road. We have yellow arrows, we have yellow squares on the floor that are six feet apart throughout our entire building to literally show the students how to walk one way, one-way hallways and up-down stairways. And you know what? The students just did it. It was like, okay, you want us to walk one way and upstairs and downstairs? Okay. And they, they absolutely do. When we needed staff to help, everybody pitched in. We have hundreds of those arrows on the floor everywhere. It didn't matter, everybody helped. It really, truly, truly has been a huge concerted effort with everybody. We talk about our pirate family, and they've all stepped up to do what's right for kids. And I think that's, we remind ourselves, why are we here? It's for our students. And it really, really has been amazing to watch. I know we, there's been a lot of references to the lunchroom and some of the different things. We tried new things. Our, our theme at the beginning of the year, I had a, a shirt that said, "When life gives you lemons", and dot, dot, dot. Well, we've talked about how many new recipes can you find with lemons? And I'm telling you, everyone has figured out something new, no matter where you work, no matter what you're doing, the teachers. Again, there's been references to all the new ways we're doing things with our custodians, with the kitchen, all the amazing things that have been adapted. You name it, people have come up with a new version. And there's a lot of the new version that we've talked about. We really like the new version. And a lot of the new version we might want to keep, no matter what, what way we deliver education for our students, there's some things we're going to really like, unintended, very positive things that have happened around here. I think, again, it really goes to show when we set expectations and we know why we're doing it, we're going to do it. We will figure it out. We will figure it out. Has it been stressful? Absolutely. Has there been enough time? I think if you ask anybody, they all will tell you they wish we had more time. Time was tough, no matter what it is that we're doing. But people still figure it out. They are going to put in the effort that's needed to make it happen. So I, I do, I think there's a lot of fabulous things. There's always going to be challenges, but we're going to just keep on doing our, doing our very best, and we're going to see how many more recipes and how many more things we can come up with our lemons. All right, that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Bart. And really thanks to all of you. I know you're representing your colleagues across the district and all of our schools, and many of them share the very same experiences, and yet some very unique experiences at every site. So I do want to take a moment to thank all of you for presenting tonight and all of your colleagues for their leadership in, you know, preparing and getting ready and launching this model, and then problem-solving the things that have been coming up the last few days, and we're, we're just a handful of days in. So I'm grateful and very proud of the work that all of you and all of your colleagues have done. And I know you all pointed this out, really has taken every employee in your building to make it happen. And how the entire staff in our, each of our schools have rallied around what it takes to make it successful and continue to improve on how we're doing things. So board members, I'm just going to say, you'll have a chance to ask any follow-up questions of our principals if you have them. Once we get to the rest of the presentation, I know they're going to hang on here and we'll get that, give you that opportunity here to follow up. So as I move on, I'll be relatively fast with some of the information we've seen before, but just to ground ourselves again. In our next slide that we see here is our safe learning plan levels in our district and we're, we're in that level three K-12 hybrid model that we started on 28th. And, and again, last week our board moved to, moved us towards in-person elementary on the 19th, which is still in that level three hybrid learning. It's just a different version of that hybrid model. I do want to say again, as I visit the schools and been out to a couple more today and I'm getting out to all the buildings. The amazing creativity that's happening and implementing and adjusting to the kinds of things that you heard from our leaders. Next slide, just real briefly, as we continue to move forward and make decisions, we're using our framework for decision-making and, you know, quickly it's looking at our data. As it comes in new all the time and looking at our measures and our readiness indicators, we then really rely on our consultation and guidance from our state agencies. Consult with our district leaders, our school leaders who you heard from tonight, our union leadership and other sources of feedback. Then we take that information and continue to evaluate our recommendations to you. You take that information and make decisions based on recommendation. And then we finally communicate as we're trying to find as most effective ways we can communicate the status of our learning models and any changes if needed and refinements that are happening as feedback dictates. So as moving forward, I'm going to share with you the kind of most recent information we've been given since last time we met. Really related to steps one and two in our process as it relates to case rate data and guidance from our state agencies and regional support teams in our county public health. So just real quick on our assumptions, I'm going to highlight, you know, we, we've been saying this ever since March really, but really through the summer now into the fall, that case counts will fluctuate and that is happening again. And we're watching that closely and that was one of our assumptions we knew would be true. Next slide. I can go one more. Thank you. So just as a reminder, this is a parameters that we're following from the state level. And we've seen this many times before, but I like to ground us in this, you know, right now. Up till this point, we've been in that, recently in that 10 to 19 range. We did see a, a jump last week, putting us close to 19. And you know, that next level up where we started back in August was in that 20 range where, where we kind of landed in a hybrid K-12 for all, all students. So as we look at the next slide here, it's an updated reporting period since our last meeting. Showing that increase in case rate across the county. We went from 14.6 now to 18.7. We have another update on Thursday. You can see that trend there and really across the county, there was increases across the county and in every one of our cities in our district. That'll show up here on the next slide. What you can see here is really all four of our major cities that we have, had saw increases this week. The biggest jump was in Maple Grove, going from 12.2 to 18.3. Nearly two-point jump in Brooklyn Center and a, just shy of a five-point jump in Brooklyn Park to get in that mid twenties range. With an increase also on Plymouth. So we had been hearing about, you know, whether this was going to happen with the case rate data, the, the daily data we see. And with the lagging model that the state uses and the county uses. We just kind of had been wondering when that might start to happen. So the next slide here is really updating you on the consultation and guidance that we've been given from our MDE and MDH state agencies, our regional support team and our Hennepin County partners in public health. So they really have been pointing out to us, this was last Friday's consultation meeting, record cases we're seeing on a daily basis. We're going to see that show up in multi, you know, in our reporting moving forward, probably over multiple data points. As we see increased county and city data show up. They're monitoring very closely the community spread in our cities, in our district. And have been pointing out the support for our K-12 hybrid model. If that countywide number does end up in the twenties, especially if all three of our largest cities are in that 20 range and above. And keep reminding us too that we're, you know, districts across the state are, are not able to be in a less restrictive model than what that county rate reflects. So we were, we've been very hopeful to get to that in-person space in elementary and we're, and to wonder if that data is beginning to change enough to reconsider that. So moving forward. If the kind of next steps, I guess, is what I'm kind of going to next year, we're going to evaluate that October 8th case rate data. And we'll also have then a, a new commissioner call with MDE on Thursday afternoon. And then we have our consultation call with MDE, MDH and Hennepin County Friday morning on the 9th. And as we've been talking about pivoting, if, if we see that trend begin and what kind of jump we're seeing and what we're hearing from our consultation calls. If we begin to see our countywide rates and our three largest city rates in those 20 ranges or higher. Depending on the guidance we get, you know, we may want to explore and need to think about delaying that in-person elementary move, staying in this K-12 hybrid model that you heard about tonight in alignment with the state model. Depending on that case rate data. What complicates things a bit is our MEA weekend coming up and all the planning that, you know, we have kind of queued up to do. So as the week moves forward, my best thinking right now is, you know, if we see a large enough increase in the data, putting us in that new model criteria. I'd rather see us making that decision on Monday, the 12th and trying to make that decision October 15th or 16th during the MEA weekend when we're in the middle of making a ton of operational changes. So we'll see what the information comes with this week, but it is possible, depending on the data. We either get to continue with that planning and in-person learning if, if things level out and continue to allow that to happen or if things change. That I might be coming back, asking the board to have an emergency meeting to potentially just ask us to delay the start of that in-person learning, keep us in hybrid. Continue to monitor very closely the activity of the virus and, and its impact on our learning. Especially when you've heard from our leaders that we are gaining valuable experience with this K-12 model and there's been many positives that have come with it. With a, a change, I think for our elementary schools, we will, we will lose that strong ability to distance. Do social distancing and have some other real operational challenges. Especially if the virus is, is increasing at a significant rate. So we're just watching all those things closely and back to my comment earlier, we, we say at every meeting, be ready to pivot and we're just kind of you know, at that point where we may need to again, and we're only as good as the, the information we keep getting every week. So with that, I'm going to pause and Chair O'Staphie, I'll turn it back to you to again facilitate questions or comments. I know our principals have stayed on and you, many of you may have questions for them tonight. Based on what you heard on their reports. So thank you, Chair O'Staphie.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. With that, let's start with Heather Douglas. Do you have any clarifying questions at this point? Before we go to comments, anything that you need to clarify? Heather, you're on mute if you're talking. All right, now let's go to Director Muscata Jones.
Yes, thank you. I don't think that I have much for clarifying questions at this moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director Simons, any questions?
Yeah, I have two clarifying questions. So the first one on the issue of attendance. What I understand the issue to be was kind of in the management of kind of all the different ways to track attendance versus kids actually attending. So can you clarify? It's more the administration of attendance versus kids are not participating or, or if it's both, can you elaborate?
It could be a combination of, of many factors, but I would say the main thing is the main source of tracking attendance for distance learning students is for students to fill out a Google form for each class period. So they attend their first class period, they fill out the Google form. That allows the, the teachers to see who, who was attending class that day from home. The challenge then amplifies when a student does not sign in or students. And now the teacher has to then go find if the student is turning in assignments yet for that day. And remember, this is all later. So they have the date 11:59 and so they're now looking at the next day, looking back to see if students have turned in assignments, if they haven't, is there any other form of engagement that they can report or that they see? Where then they can give them credit for being in attendance that day. And then we're, we're getting many, many calls from families or, or connections with family emails around, hey, I was sitting right next to my child. They were attending class all day long and they were doing all the work and yet now they're, we're getting calls that they're, they're not attending class, that they're absent for that day. And by the way, this call is a day later. So a lot of confusion and it is a lot of work on our teachers. It, it truly is. They're spending a lot of time just if, if students are not getting in to fill out those forms. They're spending a lot of time just tracking, you know, out of six periods, six periods a day. And when you're looking at exploratories that can have upwards of 400 students and classroom teacher, core teachers having, you know, 150 to 200 students, it's just a lot of work. It's a lot of management.
Thank you. My second clarified question is, so Cory, as we look at the changing numbers. When we, if we cross that 20, there's no way MD is going to prove our ability to move to in-person. So I, I just, that's my understanding and just want to be clear, very clear and transparent. If, if the next set is above 20, it's not happening. Is that your understanding and as you work with MD?
That's my best opinion on it as well, Tanya. You know, we still have those conversations about it. But they've been very clear, not only with, with us, but as I talk with other districts as well. What you just described is, has been very true.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for questions.
All right, thank you. Director Dawson Walton, you have a question?
Um, yeah, how are we, you know, well, thank you to all of our district leadership and administration for your principals, I'm sorry, your principals for giving us some feedback and insight and I'm, I guess my question is, I mean, I'm assuming that a lot of that in, insight and feedback are actually coming directly from our teachers and ESPs and their experiences. And then the follow-up question would be like, you know, to Superintendent McIntyre, do you have or are you planning to have even a small group of teachers or ESPs just to kind of, I know you've visited the schools and, and I know you're pretty engaged that way, but even to give some, you know, we've received emails with just some really reasonable solutions to some of, you know, the teachers feeling overwhelmed or, you know, just being able to really educate our students in this model, knowing that as everybody kind of indicated, it's pretty, you know, it's not a simplistic model by any means and there's a lot of moving pieces. But it seems to me it might be helpful just to listen to even a small group of educators to just say what are some ways you could potentially envision utilizing ESPs differently or any, anyways.
Yeah, you had on something really important. So as you heard from everyone, that the experience of living this model, as hard as we prepare, living it, experiencing it, even just for a few short days. We're starting to see now, you know, here's some ideas and recommendations that have not only come in from teachers, you know, to their building principals, but you know, to, to all of us as feedback and we are really trying to kind of do it from a multi effort perspective. So I'm almost communicating with, with our, our union leadership every day to see what are you hearing today? Because we have lots of challenges that we're trying to partner on and how we find solutions for those challenges. And it happens at the classroom level, the building level, all the way up to how do we, you know, is it a system-wide thing we need to change? Like this attendance one is a, is a tough one. You're like, as we live this attendance challenge, ideas are going to come from that on how to solve it. So that's kind of how I'm approaching this. How do we work together in partnership to solve these things that are pervasive across the building? That's my kind of short answer, Kelsey, for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're not at comment time. I guess we're at questions. So I'll hold myself.
All right, thank you. Director Bristol, do you have any clarifying questions?
Well, yes, thank you to all of you for, for sharing your, your stories. It's really heartening. I do have a question and I guess Margaret, I'm going to direct it to you since you piqued my interest on this. When you were talking about how you're, you're getting feedback that, you know, things are going so well and you're able to introduce more curriculum more quickly. What's happening after a day when they're at home and they come back? You know, how, 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 in what level, if there's any disarray, is there? And how, how long does it take the teacher to kind of get everybody on the page so they can take that surge forward? And so if you take and extrapolate that, how are you looking at the end of the week as opposed to the end of the day?
Great question. So we're only a week and a half in. So teachers right now are for the most part relying on CSO to get feedback for the at-home day learning. But again, we're finding that that can be very overwhelming with multiple assignments, even though they may only have 17 kids at home that day. It's, it's just a multiple of assignments. So that is one of the areas that we're looking at, like maybe instead of responding at home on CSO, maybe the student actually brings back some evidence of learning the next day that they arrive in person. So I'm working at home. It's my Tuesday. It's my at-home day. But Wednesday, when I show up at Rice Lake, I'm going to bring some, some tactile results of my learning. So we're just too early in yet to really have some patterns of, are we making good traction? When the kids are at home, but we, even though we're only seven days in, teachers are saying that they are really making traction in the classroom. Not to overcompensate and overcome the at-home day, but that they're just able to cover so much content and instruction and engagement and assessment when the kids are live.
I appreciate that. I, I just, I, I fear that there, there could be some kids kind of lost in the, in the wash there, you know, if they weren't ready for learning when they come back at that accelerated pace. And yet you've got some kids who are probably really motivated and moving through and I'm just really looking forward to more data and more time to understand how you're balancing that. I'll hold the rest of my comments till afterwards. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I have a question. This has been a greater review of hybrid learning. What about the DLA? When will we see a similar presentation regarding that?
Yeah, we haven't planned that yet. Tonight was really to give you an update on what we've experienced the last week with that, but I can do some follow-up if there's specific questions between now and next opportunity to present on DLA.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back around and start with any comments. I, I keep seeing Director Douglas getting kicked out of the meeting. She's tried to join now many times. So I don't know what's going on there. Heather, you're not currently on, correct? No, so let's start with-
Heather is on.
She is?
Yes.
Heather?
You're muted, Director Douglas.
Go ahead. Okay.
Jumping in and out.
Yeah, let's go with Director Simon.
Sorry, did you say me?
Yeah, do you have any questions?
I have comments now. Okay, so you know, I think it's really great to hear the update. I think that what all of the principals have articulated and the excitement and, and kind of that, that managing that change management curve of ramping up really kind of the concerns we heard before implementation. And just kind of getting in it and feeling like, you know, the, the rhythm is coming back. I think that is very similar to the feedback that I'm hearing from families. And I think, you know, we, we did hear some different stories from teachers, but we've also heard positive stories from teachers too. So when I'm thinking of this decision-making process, you know, I'm really thinking about what am I hearing from principals? What am I hearing from families? What am I hearing from teachers? And really trying to make the best decision when I'm hearing all of those different perspectives. And so so I, I appreciate the perspective that you're bringing and I completely trust that those are reflections of how your your teachers are feeling in your buildings too. And I appreciate that Cory's connecting directly with their union representatives as well. So I do share some of the concerns about getting enough information as time goes on and how the at-home days are. And be able to ensure that we can have a mechanism to hear the voices from our families as well. We get the emails from the families on what's working and not working, but we just need to continue to have good data points that we can have all three- on what's working and not working. Um, but we just need to continue to have good data points that we can have all three perspectives to really ensure that we're in a comprehensive view. Um, uh, the other, um, piece I would echo was from Director Dawson Walton with, uh, the ideas that are coming from teachers. Really, I have a lot of support for anything we continue, can continue to do more efficiently and effectively, taking anything that's not necessary off the plates of teachers or finding different ways to get that work done, um, by different people, um, to the extent that we can continue to explore opportunities there. It just, I hope you can hear my support for that, um, and continue to do things differently. Is there other, in my last comment slash questions, is there anything that you can reflect back from what you're hearing from families that might not have already been stated tonight? Because I, I do think it was lots of enthusiasm, um, to be back, lots of, um, excitement and smiles and happy faces. Any, anything else that we need to know that you're hearing from families at this time?
Open that up for principals.
You know, I think the one thing I would say is not yet, and I think that part of that is because we're just getting rolling. Um, most of us are moving forward soon that we'll be having conferences. So I would anticipate as we make connections with families during conferences, we may start to hear, um, more specific, situations and concerns, but it, it really, when I think about it, it's even though it's the fourth week of school, it's really only the second per week of in-person and getting this new pattern of learning and, um, new way of doing things. So I think it, it's going to take a little time before we really know for sure because we're just getting used to it. We all are.
Thank you. Final comment. Um, trying to keep track of all my papers with questions and notes. Um, I really loved, um, hearing what the real scientists teaching, um, and that kind of continuation of the virtual that's happening. And, um, I think that's just such a fantastic idea. And the more that maybe we can lean into some of those thoughts where we have, uh, resources that might be outside our buildings that come in and provide some of that, um, instruction or alternative creative ideas that might also be a way to lessen some of the load. So, um, this might be the time to lean into some of that work that we're doing. That's all. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Uh, Director Dawson Walton, any comments?
Um, yeah, so, um, I, well, I first, I have to say that, you know, my three girls, I always talk about them with their experiences. I mean, I will say that I am so blown away by teachers. I, I, and educator ESPs, I mean, even the attention to detail, um, um, it's when they turn assignments in and then getting it back and the feedback, I just am like really blown away. And I'm also, you know, the fact that, um, you know, we just started talking about conferences. I mean, I think it is, it's a lot to add on to teachers' plate then, and then to have these virtual conferences. And even though, you know, of course we didn't sign up and then my girl's teachers are like, Kelsey, please sign up. So, I mean, I just, I appreciate that level of detail and attention, um, to our families. And I know it's hard. And I just would, um, I would just say to, you know, I, we haven't been in this model very long and I, um, and the more, I think over the week and I just hearing from families, I do think that, um, just seeing how this model plays out and, and, and how it works is so important. I mean, especially the, the numbers are so, they're not stable, you know, right now. And, um, just going back and forth and back and forth isn't super productive either for anyone. Um, but you know, I, I very much trust our administration to make these decisions and, you know, follow the guidelines for the state and, and that's really important. Um, and I, I just want to reiterate how important, I know we've kind of touched on it and we've said it in many different ways, but if there is a way, even if it's through conferences, if there's a way we can start getting a, a pulse, because, you know, we do get a lot of emails, but we're also, we're obviously not hearing from, you know, that's a small percentage of our district. So if there's any way we can do, and Corey, you talked about this, like a poll survey or something real quick, just to get some real-time information from our families and our, and our staff. Um, I think that would be really helpful for us to be able to make really sound decisions. And so, um, I will just leave it at that. Thank you.
Just, thank you, uh, Director Dawson Walton. And I did want to jump in. Uh, board members, I'll be providing you with an update on our efforts to develop those poll surveys soon. We, we, we kind of are looking at it as, you know, our, our typical annual surveys, there's not much typical about things right now. So whether we should suspend that, what we typically do and do more of these short bursts of surveys more frequent to get, um, get it done in a different way. And I want to, uh, just acknowledge that our, uh, research and assessment team has been working on how we can do that. So we're close on, on getting that, uh, getting that done.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Director Bristol, any comments?
Well, um, again, to all of you that presented tonight and to all your colleagues, I'd just like to say thank you for, uh, being in the front line and in the battle. And the enthusiasm and the leadership that you're showing is, is evident. And uh, certainly I don't think that the, uh, the students would be having the experiences if you weren't helping the teachers stay fired up and excited and, uh, ready to do this. Cause I know it's an extraordinary amount of work. And to all those teachers that might be watching tonight, you know, I'm just in awe of what you're doing. It's, it's, it's incredible. So I'd like to thank them. And then I'd also like to thank the other stakeholders who aren't, uh, represented directly tonight, but I'd like to thank all the parents. So we're reading all these emails and, and they're doing a lot of heavy lifting. Some of them not able to go to work and other things because of the model we're in. And yeah, we all, I think, I think everyone in the, the presentation tonight would love to see it if people could be in school every day. But we have this challenge in front of us and we're all, uh, stressed. And so I just ask that, that we, we make sure that every parent that is doing all these things is recognized. I know it'll be really hard, uh, when conferences come around because your teachers don't know the students quite as well as they would have during a normal conference. But I think this will be a great opportunity for you to help get involved with the teachers and to, to help them learn about your students so that they can do the best they can. Finally, I'd just like to say that I think that it's really important, uh, for us to be really understanding, you know, which ones of these kids are, are not really staying focused at home or who maybe don't have that support at home. So we can try, try to keep them from falling too far behind too soon. And I, I don't know that I've really seen a lot of, you know, exception processing for kids that maybe just aren't getting it done at home and how you're going to keep them up during, you know, this period of time. I know it's a, hopefully a one-time shot and then soon we'll be through this thing and over, but that to me, what's it going to look like next year and how these kids will do on those assessments and stuff? It's got to be the thing that keeps you all up at night. And I know it keeps the parents up at night and I know it keeps us on the board up at night. So we're just here to listen and to offer any constructive ideas we can and just to support you and just say thank you.
Thank you, Director. Director Douglas, any comments?
Yes, I had to call in because I don't know what's wrong with my internet, but, um, uh, thank you. Uh, Director Bristol, I feel like you just stole the words right out of my mouth. So thanks for that. Um, I was able to see and hear almost the entire, um, presentation, but I did miss some of the first initial comments and questions from my colleagues. So, um, just trying to piece what I heard together. And I just wanted to, to say that I really appreciated the hearing about the, the really positive and in some cases unexpected experiences that our, um, students and staff are experiencing in the hybrid learning model. In a time of such difficulty and challenge where, um, sometimes it feels like everything is going wrong. It's really good for us to focus on those positive things and, and to be reminded of them, that good things are happening. Especially when we're, we're talking about, um, teachers who are able to connect with students in a deeper way because their class sizes are, are smaller when they're in person. Those things are so wonderful and so great. Um, but I also am really concerned about the, um, the days that our kids are home. I know in our house that we're really struggling with hybrid for, um, one of our kids, she's really having a hard time. And I know that we're not the only family facing that. I mean, you know, we hear as board members from lots of parents who are having concerns and, and how can we not overwhelm our teachers? They already have so much on their plate. But also make sure that these students aren't being, uh, I don't want to say left behind because they're, they are being connected with and they're getting, um, lessons in school, but when they're at home, they maybe don't have the support. And even the ones that do have support, like my daughter who has me here with her is still struggling, right? I'm really concerned about those kids and how can we, um, ensure that they're getting what they need, um, and being able to engage with their learning in a productive way so that they're not impacted later on when they're expected to have, have learned these things that maybe they didn't pick up on. So anyways, that's just a couple of comments that I have. I don't want to take up too much time with questions. I know you guys already got a bunch. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Douglas. And, uh, you know, again, my, my comment is in following on with what Director Douglas was saying, hybrids. There's, there's positives and negatives of everything that we've been doing. And, you know, this hopefully, this, this ends hopefully this year. We can go back to a full-time model for good in the near future, but hybrid still has three days at home. Many of the kids are unsupervised or unsupported in less than a ideal learning environment. And, and we can't forget that when we're talking about the praises of some models, that there are some negatives that are impacting our children. And, uh, a- a- and we can't allow that to continue to happen. We either have to find ways to, to fix that in the short term, or, or we find new models. But a- a- as of this point, uh, there's still a lot of things that, that we, you know, that, that we should be concerned about, uh, in the hybrid model. Uh, and again, that's why the goal, uh, safely is to get everybody back in. But that really depends upon the numbers in the guidance. So, you know, we've had the parents talking, you know, telling us we have to get back in school and I agree. But we are limited in what we can do by the governor and by the numbers. So we are trying to do this, in, in my opinion, as best as we can, as safely as we can, but we have to take into account that is, you know, the current model is certainly not the best for all of our students. So, uh, with that, uh, Director McIntyre, or I'm sorry, Superintendent McIntyre, if you have, uh, any follow-up?
Excuse me?
Comments or we can go, uh, I'm sorry, we all have our comments.
Chair, Chair Ostaffy, I did not get my second round.
Oh, you didn't?
No, you skipped me.
I, I apologize.
No, that's okay. Um, so I just, I didn't ask any questions, um, the first round, um, because I was still gathering my thoughts. Uh, just some food for thought and thinking that I've had. Um, I would, uh, appreciate a DLA update, um, as soon as we can get one. We have a lot of families that are concerned about class sizes and, and I know that because we had such an influx of people, going into DLA that it's been a little bit of a bumpy start. So when we can get an update on that, I would greatly appreciate it. Um, another thing I was thinking is I've had a lot of parents, um, reach out, as I'm sure others have, um, saying that they would love to help out in any way that they possibly can. And so I'm, um, wondering if we have some sort of problem-solving task force, um, for workload issues for teachers. The, um, the non-in-person days or the distance learning days in the hybrid model, it's very difficult to teach and also have content on. And I'm wondering if that might be an opportunity to get, um, some people in to do some, much like Boston Scientific is doing at, um, Zane Wood, um, to get in and do some types of engagement, or if we could have ESPs even do a Google meets just to have that social emotional, um, uh, connection piece. Um, so these are just all things I'm throwing out. Uh, you can take them or leave them for what they're worth. Um, another thing that I've heard a lot of, uh, concerns about is, uh, the attendance issues, which I know you've addressed. Um, Patrick explained it pretty well. Um, I know that, um, my district, um, was able to not send out the notices to families for two days so that teachers could catch up on figuring out doing the attendance, um, can do some back attendance. Um, and if that, something like that's not possible, I'm wondering if we can communicate to parents, um, about the issues that we're working on and, and kind of what to expect. Cause, um, some of them are feeling like, is it just me? Am I crazy? What's going on? Um, so I've gotten a lot of feedback on that. Um, I'm just checking to see if I got to everything that I had on here. Is it possible next time to have some teachers give us a little bit of, um, what their experience is in working with some of these models if they volunteer? I don't want to put anything extra um, on their plate. Cause I, I know how that goes. I think that's all I have for rate at this time. Thanks.
You're muted.
I can't hear you. Cheryl Staffy.
All right. Sorry about that. Uh, and thank you, uh, Director Misscada Jones and apologize for jumping, uh, over your line there. Uh, and Director, Superintendent McIntyre, uh, can you, any final thoughts or comments before we move on to the next item?
Well, I, I really appreciate your thoughtful comments and questions. And you, as you can tell, we're gaining experience every day. And it's been a short, um, period of time, but we've have learned a lot. And, um, you know, some things are working well and other things are still very challenging. And I wanted you to hear both of those, uh, perspectives tonight as we continue to just, uh, do what we can to improve on this. I, I think, uh, Cheryl Staffy, you said it very well. You could ask any one of our principals on the call. We all want our students back. We know that's the best, uh, environment for them to learn. And, and we also realize the the safety and, and significance of the pandemic and why we're in the models we're in. So we're going to do the best we can with what we have. And keep learning and listening and, uh, improving. So your, your feedback and suggestions are very helpful. And I also just want to, uh, again, thank our leaders for taking the time to share with us tonight what, what their experience has been so far, even though it's been a short period of time. And we'll continue to, uh, find effective ways to, um, get, um, really valuable feedback from our families and our staff and in our community too. Uh, we, we are working with a lot of community partners as well. So it's been very challenging. And as you can hear, people are working very tirelessly, uh, day and night. Um, and really it's been happening since March. And um, I am very grateful for all the efforts that are, uh, happening across our organization to do everything we can possibly do. So I know you see that and I'm very proud of the effort that's continuing to happen, um, with everything we're doing as everything changes so fast. Right? So, uh, with that, um, I thank you, Charles Staffy. And you're, uh, you're ready to transition onto the third topic or did you have something else in mind here? I don't know if you need a break? Or move, move forward?
Uh, does anyone need a break? Raise your hand or just, uh, shake your head. Uh, okay. Uh, Director Bristol, you have a comment and you're on mute.
I could use one minute.
All right. Uh, all right. Let's put ourselves on mute and, uh, turn the cameras off and come back in about three minutes if we can. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. I have one minute left on my timer. Thirty seconds. Ten. All right, everybody. Uh, welcome back. And the next item on the agenda is our COVID-19 general notification process uh led off by Ron Meyer, Colin O'Brien, and Troy Schreifels. Ron, it's yours.
Okay. Thank you. And good evening, Chair O'Stafi, Superintendent McIntyre, school board members, cabinet members, and community members. A key piece of our district COVID response plan that was developed throughout this past summer was the creation of a district-wide COVID response team. This team was created to be responsible, to be the main point of contact for each school's COVID response coordinator to investigate and respond to any symptomatic students or staff or any confirmed COVID-19 cases for both students or staff in our building. The district response team would work closely with the site coordinator, the Minnesota Department of Health, our facilities and custodial team, and our building principals to establish a consistent process and protocol for responding to the inevitable positive cases and symptomatic individuals, as well as to establish a communication plan to various stakeholders. This team is currently made up of five individuals, including a nurse and our COVID team coordinator, Colin O'Brien, who is here with us tonight to walk us through the process that we have established based on, again, guidance from the Department of Health as well as the Department of Education. Colin will also walk us through the communication and notification process for families and staff that they can expect related to confirmed positive cases and close contact tracing, as well as to share with us some of the initial data that we have collected uh from the first week of the hybrid model as well as uh really since the summer when we started tracking it. Before I turn it over to our health and safety team, I want to acknowledge that there has been a high interest from our staff as well as families in the district for us to provide our data around confirmed positive cases. And while there are some challenges related to data privacy that we are working through, we are working on a dashboard that we hope to make available to our families and our staff that will give a weekly snapshot of the positive cases from across our district based on the work of this district-wide COVID response team. We're hopeful uh to have something put together uh around this dashboard in the next week or so. This information will be just another important data point that can be used in making future recommendations and decisions. So this, uh, with that, I want to turn it over to Troy Schreifels, who is our Director of Facilities and Transportation Operations. He actually oversees our risk management team and gives direction to this district-wide COVID response team. So both Troy and Colin will dig into our investigation as well as our notification process. Troy?
Thanks, Ron, and good evening, everyone. Um, Board Chair, O'Stafi, Board Members, Superintendent McIntyre, and attendees. We appreciate this opportunity to share with you tonight a little bit about uh what's going on with our COVID-19 response team. First, I want to personally welcome Colin O'Brien, who oversees the COVID-19 response team, and Dave Mordock, um, our Coordinator of Risk Management. Uh, both have worked very hard um to put together this team and to get this team up and running. And uh, it's been vital in our COVID-19 response plan. Um, you'll learn a little bit tonight about how that team's coming together and what they're doing. But I do also want to acknowledge, um, they have put in countless hours, seven days a week, for the first several weeks of uh operations to handle the influx of um communications that have been coming out of the sites. And you'll, you'll learn a little bit more about that as we move forward. Can you advance the slide, please? Uh, Board members, tonight, uh, you will understand the purpose and the process of a centralized COVID-19 response team. And you'll be informed on the number of COVID-19 cases within the school district. You can go ahead and advance. Um, the purpose of the COVID-19 response team, go ahead and advance. Um, the purpose is to have a centralized command structure that's consistent across the district. And it's important to note that a centralized command allows us to be consistent about our messaging and the way we respond, investigate, and communicate back to families. I think that's very vital. I've talked to a number of our member district colleagues, and a lot of them have had more of a decentralized process where each school within a system does their own thing. And uh, we decided to move forward with a centralized system that allows consistency in messaging and the way we respond and communicate both to schools, staff, and families. We also meet um MBE and MDH's requirements for school districts to have a COVID response plan. We process and, we have processes and procedures that align with MDH and MBE guidance. This is also important to note with the centralized plan, MBE and MDH are changing weekly, if not daily. And instead of trying to communicate to all of our educational sites, um, the changes in the updates on an individual basis, we can centralize that communication, make sure we capture it, make sure that we're responding to our COVID-19 incidents and, and how we communicate and respond back. And lastly, the structure is made up of a district-wide incident command team that's led by Ron and Cory. There's the COVID-19 response team, which is uh made up of our team of Dave and, and Colin and the work that they do. And then we also have a site COVID-19 coordinator at every site. I think it's important to note also, um, the site COVID-19 coordinators, they could be a principal, an assistant principal, a business, a resource manager, an SMS, somebody that's assigned at the school. And they've been very busy at the site communicating up to our side anytime there's an event or an incident that we have to look at. So I want to compliment them on that and the work that they've done at the site level. From there, I'm going to transition and turn the presentation over to Colin. Um, and he can share a little bit more about the process.
Thank you, Troy. Good evening, Chair O'Stafi, Board Members, Superintendent McIntyre. I'm here to share the process of how the district response team is receiving information, sorting through and classifying this information, as well as communicating out to families and staff in our district in accordance with MDH on exclusion guidelines in three major categories. Someone who is experiencing symptoms associated with COVID-19, someone who is in close contact within a household who is experiencing COVID-19 symptoms, or a confirmed test result of COVID-19, or someone who has a lab test confirmed case. As shared earlier, each site has a COVID coordinator who is responsible for the preparedness plan at their sites. And they also are responsible for submitting any cases at their particular site through the uh Google forms that we've created at the district level, falling under these previous three categories. If we can move to the next slide, we'll start with uh student and staff with COVID-19 associated symptoms. This flow chart was created back in August, and the staff and student version of the flow charts do appear correctly and similarly. Uh, so we're just going to look at the student version of this. The site COVID coordinator in consultation with nursing, nursing staff on site initiates a process uh that we've developed with MDH on symptoms found in the students or staff while onsite or at home. That information is then put into the Google forms that we've created at the district level. The district-level team then takes that information and, as needed, contacts the families to um really, one, confirm the onset of the symptom date, confirm that all of the symptoms that were on the form are in fact being um uh, that each student, each uh has those symptoms that they had reported uh at the sites or at home through message or emails. And then we are sending out templated emails that uh were provided by MDH uh to those families with their onset of symptom date, their uh positive date, their close contact date, as well as uh in those emails is a return to the site's date. On those emails, you'll also note uh later that each site COVID coordinator is on those uh email responses off to the families. And that is because they are responsible at the site COVID level to make sure that the student learning uh is continued while they're in quarantine. So they'll work with the teacher or any of the other instructors uh for that individual to make sure that uh instruction is provided while they're in quarantine. So there are three major avenues uh after the information is received. So one, the uh individual chooses to get a COVID test and tests positive. Uh, we'll cover this one a little later in the presentation. The individual chooses to get a COVID test and the COVID test uh comes back negative and symptoms are improving. Uh, that is one way the student or staff can return to our buildings. Uh, they, uh, if that individual chooses not to get a COVID test, they must wait the full entirety of the 10-day quarantine uh as laid out by MDH. We'll go ahead and move to the next slide. Uh, on this slide, you're going to see the confirmed close contact. This is a little trickier. Um, so close contact right now could be uh any student or staff that has an individual experiencing COVID-19 systems within their household. So if uh any one of the individuals within the home uh is exhibiting two or more of the less commons or one or more of the more commons, which we'll get to when we talk about positive cases, then the entire house is asked uh to remain home until any of the previously three mentioned uh ways to get back to the building are met. Either the 10 full days, they receive a negative test result, uh, or they get an alternative diagnosis for the symptoms. They may return to the site. Uh, if uh the one individual experiencing the symptoms does get the negative test or um alternative diagnosis, siblings may return to the sites immediately. And the individual who is experiencing those symptoms may return when the symptoms are improving. We would like to note that the symptoms do not have to be resolved. They only need to be improving from what they previously were. And again, we would like to note the staff version of the close contact and return to buildings is identical. We can go ahead and advance to the next slide. So what do we do if we get a positive case? Uh, so the site COVID coordinator receives information of the impacted individual via uh email confirmation, a phone call to the site, uh, or any other mode that they might uh get that information from a, a coach or a teacher, uh, depending on how it's communicated to the sites. The site COVID coordinator would then fill out a very specific COVID-positive uh Google form, which you can briefly see here on the right. Uh, these questions that we're asking in this Google form directly align to the MDH red cap survey. The red cap survey from MDH is how they're gathering positive information from school. All of the questions asked in here are ones that MDH is requiring us to answer as we are reporting these uh to MDH. We're experiencing a few challenges with this in that we're only uh able to act on the information provided to us. So in some cases, uh, we make phone calls to the positive individual for close contact tracing. Uh, they either, one, don't remember or do not share with us if they were in close contact with any specific individual, staff or student at any point uh during their day with us. Um, from bus to bus is what I like to call it. So we do ask the individual, hey, when you got to the bus stop, tell us about what happened. Have you been in close contact? We'll note that uh MDH is defining close contact as closer than six feet or longer than 15 minutes. And the 15 minutes is cumulative throughout the day. Uh, so we'll move on from the bus to first period. Tell us about lunch, about recess in the afternoon. Did you take the bus home? Uh, or did you go to an activity? Uh, tell us about what's going on at that activity. So we're really contact tracing the entirety of a student or staff's day within our buildings or within something that the district has control over. We are not tracking anything that happens outside of that. So if they attend a community event, if they attend a family gathering, uh, MDH is doing all of the contact tracing for things outside of the district control. Uh, so we do uh take into account the uh individuals who tested positive. We have their bus numbers, their classroom numbers, as well as the contact information for the teachers who are in the classrooms with those individuals. We do reach out to each of the teachers affected by this to confirm that they feel as though the site preparedness plans around social distancing, mask wearing, hand washing, and all other as, uh, aspects of those preparedness plans are being followed within their classrooms. We do follow up with them and make sure that they feel safe and they feel supported with everything that we're trying to do, cleaning procedures or otherwise. If anything is uh noted by the teachers, we will then follow up uh secondarily with those individuals. Uh, we can move to the next slide. As Troy shared, we're currently set up with a centralized COVID response uh because it's easier for MDH to communicate back with an individual team as opposed to individual sites. This information uh with MDH is uh covered under HIPAA guidance. So we are not able to share any specific identifying markers of any positive individual within the school. That does include uh sharing publicly the bus number, classroom number, or any other identifying markers of that individual, staff, or student. We do have the unified communication process to look at cases and work through based on the MDH guidance provided to us. As Troy mentioned, this information is changing weekly, if not more often. And sometimes MDH guidance is, we'll handle it case by case, meaning the conversation with MDH is much longer and much more in-depth. The largest factor right now we're experiencing is around quarantining entire classrooms on a positive case. If the teachers in the classroom, as well as the individual who tested positive, are able to definitively tell us they feel social distancing was maintained while in the classroom, MDH's guidance right now is we do not need to quarantine any of the other class members that were not identified because social distancing was maintained, the largest factor. It's very important for MDH that this is maintained. All the other mitigation factors in place of mask wearing, hand washing, and others are also important, but social distancing is the primary. We'll move to the next slide. We've provided the MDH exclusion guidance that we've built our exclusion guidance from the district off of. It is exactly the same. Up at the top, we'll notice there is a more common symptoms associated with COVID-19. I realize it's very small, so I'll go ahead and read it. It says fever greater than 100.4, new onset and/or worsening cough, difficulty breathing, new loss of taste or smell. So any one of those would automatically qualify the student and siblings for exclusion from school and activities. Any of the two less common symptoms, which are noted as sore throat, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, chills, muscle pain, excessive fatigue, new onset and severe headache, new onset of nasal congestion, or running nose. Any two of those symptoms would automatically set the individual and any household siblings or uh adults also on a 10-day quarantine, only to return when any of the three previously mentioned scenarios are completed. I would like to directly point out uh on this document, the blue center section where it reads for one or more common symptom or two or less common symptoms, directly to the right of that, the blue box states, person stays home or is sent home. The gray box directly underneath that says siblings and household contacts remain at home or are sent home. This is a big point of frustration for our families right now as they do not understand that we are, why we are sending all siblings home. It is not a district mandate. We are doing that. It is clearly stated in the MDH exclusion guidelines why we are doing that. We would then follow the regular return to buildings process for the entire household. If they do not seek a COVID-19 test, the entire house waits 10 days and may return after that and symptoms are improving with no fever for 24 hours. If they choose to get evaluated and get a COVID test, uh, and the test result comes back negative, the individual and household can return. the individual and household can return immediately. If they receive an alternative diagnosis for any of those symptoms, the siblings may return to the buildings immediately, and the individual with the symptoms may return as soon as the symptoms are improved. With that, we'll move to the notifications. Here's the exact template information MDH has provided us. This is going out to any site staff members via Outlook distribution list. It's also going out to all families through School Messenger registered in the hybrid model on there. So any student, Pod A or Pod B, regardless of exposure date, will get this notification anytime we have a positive case for that date. I will note that if we have more than one exposure date listed on the same date, we only are required to send one notification, not more than one. So it may very well be that we have two positive tests for the same date, we are only sending one notification for that site. We can advance the slides. Here's the templated information for families and staff with lab test positive COVID-19. This is the exact information that the families are getting if they or their students have a positive result. It does list the test result date and the date the symptoms began on in correlation to what MDH is asking. It also lists here at the bottom their return to the building dates, as well as a few helpful links for the individual families around what to do if you have COVID-19, caring for someone sick at home, and when to return to work. We will point out that the COVID site coordinator is on these emails to families, and Human Resources Lisa McLaren is on all staff notifications for these. We'll advance slides. Here is the template information experiencing COVID-19 symptoms. This is sent to any staffer, student, who is experiencing any of the symptoms noted under MDH exclusion guidelines. If they are either sent home or remain home for any of those reasons, the family will receive this notification. It does list the onset of their symptom dates, as well as the information you are able to return to school on the date listed below, or sooner if you get a negative test result or an alternative diagnosis from a healthcare provider, as well followed by the return date. We've also included helpful links in this to assist families for understanding COVID-19 guidance for parents and families. We'll advance slides. This is the template information going out on confirmed close contacts. And again, a close contact is anybody in a household who is experiencing COVID-19 symptoms or is in close contact closer than six feet or longer than 15 minutes cumulative of anybody who has tested positive for COVID-19. It does list the exposure date, as well as the information to please quarantine for 14 days from the date of the exposure and monitor for symptoms. It lists the information about returning to the buildings, and we also list in all of our communications that if you're a student, someone from your site will be reaching out for distance learning resources. And if you're a staff and you're able to, you can work remotely, please work with your supervisor. We'll go ahead and advance slides. We're going to move into the statistics and data portion that pertains specifically to Osseo area schools. Go ahead and move to the next slide. Here's the case data for positive tests as we've seen since Sunday, October 4th. I would also like to note that this information was pulled at 11:00 a.m. this morning and is no longer up to date. That information is once my computer catches up. We are up to 11 positive cases since Sunday in our district. You can see the information here as we've listed them by site. I do believe this is also in line with the information that we're already sharing with the superintendent on his weekly briefings. We'll move to the next slide. Here you'll see the symptomatic cases. Again, I apologize for the small font. You'll see that when we pulled the data at 11 o'clock today, we had 65 symptomatics since Sunday who are out for up to 10 days, and then we've listed them by site as well. We'll go to the next slide. You'll see the close contact cases that we've been experiencing since Sunday. Again, we're experiencing 46 close contacts, so this does include siblings we've sent home of symptomatic individuals within the district. They get this information because they are household contacts of somebody experiencing COVID-19 symptoms. We'll move on to the next slide. Here is the positive case year-to-date, and I will say year-to-date means August 20th, the date we started tracking this data in this manner, till 11:00 a.m. this morning. You'll notice we do have a perfect split of 2012, 25 when we pulled the data. That is also no longer correct. The data is reading as 29 to 26 as of right now. You'll go to the next slide. You'll see the breakdown of the August 20th to date symptomatic cases that we've experienced in our district. This would include all staff and students that we've asked to either remain home or we have sent home since August 20th. We'll move to the next slide. You'll see the close contact year-to-dates, again, from August 20th. Those are significantly higher. I believe that is because of siblings we send this communication to. If there is an individual student who has symptoms, we then send home upward of however many siblings they have in that same household. So these numbers are indicative of all people we send home or ask to remain home. We'll move to the next slide. This information is pertaining to the before we've started hybrid learning and since we've started hybrid learning. So you'll notice the positive cases prior to 9/27 is 26 total cases in the district in the roughly four weeks. Since then, in just over eight days, we've experienced 24 positive cases in the district. Similarly, we'll look at symptomatic cases prior to in-person learning at 49, and symptomatic cases since the first day of learning, 9/28 through today, 160 cases of symptomatic cases. Close contacts since 8/20 through Sunday, 9/27 at 48, and the close contacts from 9/28 to present is 196 individuals. We'll move to the next slide. That concludes the presentation as we've prepared it, and we'll open the floor to questions or comments.
And Chair O'Stafi, if I can, before we go to questions, I do want to make one point just for board members to be aware. Colin did talk about the current cases that we have, and just within the last week, the Department of Education has created a new dashboard, if you will, with identifying schools within the state of Minnesota, not school districts, but individual schools that have more than five cases, positive cases. As of last week, which was the first week that they published that document, there were five schools in the state of Minnesota. We do anticipate, based on the information that Colin has shared thus far, that we will have, we will likely see Maple Grove Senior High on that list this week when it comes out. I believe that there are seven or eight. Colin, you can give us the exact number at Maple Grove Senior over the last week.
Yep, that number is seven.
And with that, we'll turn it back to Chair O'Stafi for any questions.
All right, thank you. Let's start with Director Kelsey Dawson-Walton. Director Dawson-Walton. Any questions?
Well, I'm, that was, thank you for that presentation. I mean, that is a lot to take in. I mean, that is a lot of ifs and I mean, that's, you know, for, I'm just thinking about it, for you all, our families, our our, you know, and our students, and of course, our teachers and staff. So I just thank everyone for working diligently, because that's, this is another layer, you know, on top of just what we typically deal with in a school day. I guess I'm kind of taking it all in. I mean, I've definitely received some notifications, so this clarifies a lot just in general around just the emails around, you know, just notifying that there was a case or, you know, and, but, you know, your child wasn't, you know, how they, just what you showed. So I don't know if I have a lot of questions. I might have some later, let me just hear what everybody else asks. I'm just kind of like processing still a little bit.
All right, thank you. Director Bristol?
I just wanted to comment that it's a very well-thought-out action plan. Having been in the military, I'm very impressed with the thoroughness of it. I can just imagine the mobile command post running around handling these things. But all kidding aside, because it's really a serious topic, of these people that are positive, I'd just like to, if anyone's watching that is, I'd just like to extend my wishes for a speedy recovery. And I hope that no one has actually gotten real sick out of this. I know that we're going to experience cases, it's part of what this is about, and we've done everything we can to be ready. And so I'm just hoping that we can get through this in a, you know, the best way possible. And so those of you that are on the front lines of handling this, I just commend you for your work and for your preparation.
Thank you. Director Douglas, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you. I'm not, I don't know if I really have any questions. I feel like the presentation was extremely thorough, and a lot of the questions that I had were answered throughout the process. So I just wanted to say thank you for the incredible presentation and information. I feel like this will be really helpful for a lot of the families who've been reaching out with questions about how we're handling this. And there's a lot of clarity given here, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. And also, you know, this is, it's a hard situation because we're going to have cases. And I'm really thankful that we have a well-thought-out process for how we handle when we have cases and that we're being really transparent about that. I know there was some concern early on about the process and would we be transparent? And so I really appreciate the really upfront process and the clarification around why we're doing some of these things. Some of the reasons of why we're notifying in a certain way or protocols are specifically, directions that are specifically given to school districts. So clarifying that piece of information, I think, is really helpful for people who are wondering that. So I guess kudos for a really thorough presentation. And also, you know, I know we're all going to be affected by cases at a certain point. And so I'm just hoping that we can mitigate that and manage as effectively as possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Director Muscata Jones?
Yeah, that is a lot of information to take in and just goes to show all the things that we've had to deal with as a district to get going this year. So I appreciate all that work for that. I don't really have any questions, and I echo my colleagues on, you know, my thoughts with people who have been diagnosed positive and hope everyone is, hope that we don't have any real severe cases.
Thank you. Director Simons?
I'd just like to echo the comments by my fellow board members, and just thank you for the in-depth presentation. Thank you for all the work, all the planning, and that really goes for all of the presentations tonight and all of the work that has gone on to bring us back to school. So thank you, and I appreciate that, and also extend my wishes and care for those who are dealing with it. And this is to be expected as we see the impact in our communities. It will show up in our schools, so it's to be expected. But we must always be diligent, vigilant, and responsive as we work through this. I appreciate the transparency. I think being upfront and transparent will limit the concerns or the feeling like something's not being shared or inappropriate Facebook sharing, which we don't want happening, especially when it comes to students and their privacy. So I would ask our families and our staff to be very respectful of the privacy here because we're talking about, you know, we're talking about our students and we're talking about our families. So let's just be really careful about that. So thank you for all the work.
Thank you, and I have a question. The item shows that we had, on here it's eight, but I think you said 11 positive cases. Symptomatic cases showing 65, but I think you threw out a slightly higher number. Those folks who were symptomatic, they don't have to get a test, is that correct? There's no MDH, MBE, or District 279 requirement that they're tested, is that correct?
That is correct. We cannot require anyone to take a COVID test.
Okay. Do we know maybe what percentage are getting tests done, or no?
I can share with you an anecdote that we've returned, specifically, I've returned about 10 or 11 students to the classrooms early based on negative test results just today.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Chair O'Stafi, if I can just jump in a little bit to some, to kind of share with you some of the conversations we're having as we wrestle with this. Thank you for acknowledging how complex it is, and I just can't say enough how proud I am of the team to develop this model of doing this from a centralized perspective so that we are consistent in our procedures. We invested in creating this team, and thank you, Colin, for your leadership, and all the others that really are a part of this, really, every building, having our coordinator carry on this additional responsibility is making a big difference. And you're seeing we're getting cases, they're happening all around us. And a couple of key points to me that weigh on me heavily is, you know, if we continue to see activity go up, I think it was said earlier in the presentation, when we're in K-12 hybrid, we are social distancing, less quarantine. If we move to in-person learning and there's less or no social distancing, we'll have large numbers, large numbers of quarantining going on. And so that's one. Number two, I'm just really nervous about the impact on staff. We have a very thin subset.